Good afternoon. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a special information session meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Tuesday, May 10, 2022, at 6:07 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum Grande and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Host captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. To our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, and universal, liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One nation, under God, one and universal.
Thank you. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing. We have time for up to 60 speakers. And as a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to take part in active listening. And while we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio-record their remarks. We will now play the recorded messages for public comment, so please listen carefully.
Yes, I'm a supervisor for the school bus drivers. I really think the district needs to listen to a supervisor, to know what our drivers have to go through to become a driver and to maintain their employment with us as a driver. It is not like we just hand them the keys and off they go. There's a lot of training that they have to go through. It takes us almost three to four months to get one person trained to drive the school bus. So I think you really need to speak to an operations supervisor at the terminal before you make any other decision.
Good morning. I am one of your dedicated, safe and reliable bus drivers in your district. I have a few questions for you. Why are drivers specifically being targeted with the holiday pay? Why not all of classified employees or all of transportation? Why drivers specifically? And those of us who are staying, the drivers who are staying, should we all prepare for this administration to delete or omit our health benefits, our TERS benefits, and any other benefits that we are getting through the district? You are letting the media know that these figures are, we are getting an increase. However, you're doing it by eight hours. Per my assistant supervisor, our routes are mostly, mainly, the majority are six-and-a-half-hour routes. We're guaranteed four-hour routes a day.
Yes, this is Daniela Rivas. I'm a bus driver, and I'm calling because I think that we should keep our pay raise plus also get paid for the holidays like we were getting paid before. So anyway, that's my comment on this. Thank you.
Yes, I am an AISD bus driver, and I'm calling about the raise that you're supposedly giving us, a raise that you are taking away our holiday pay, and I am not, I am not for that. I am for the raise with, with the holiday pay. Dell Valley AISD has stepped up, and they are paying the same actually as, as ourselves, which should not be correct, them being a smaller district. Please step up and take care of your bus drivers as we take care of the kids to and from school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniela, and I am calling to let you know that I think you should leave as it is, the $4 raise and keep holiday pay. That will affect the, I think, I just think it would just be better left the way it was.
Hello, my name is Lisa Flores. I'm a parent to students in Austin ISD. I'm also an engaged disability advocate. I wanted to say the Stetson Report was initiated several years ago. This report is being released to the public and discussed by the Board, required countless hours of dedicated advocacy to happen. While I believe the report is a good jumping-off point, I believe what is being presented here tonight is not the whole untarnished truth. I appreciate the Stetson Report claims leadership has a clear vision for students with disabilities and wonder when that vision will be shared with the public. We simply have not been privy to anything that is a clear vision as a community. There is a disconnect in the data between what campuses think they do to support students and what Stetson saw. As far as staffing goes, the devil's in the details, and ratios are not an appropriate or reliable indicator of staffing, as students with disabilities are not a monolith and are not all served in the same setting or have the same needs. Trustees, I ask each of you to be vigilant to track and verify the precedent given to you tonight and to ask the administration to provide a clear vision and strategic plan for special education to the public. Thank you.
My name is Marie. I'm a parent. I have four children. Please stop lying about sped. Stop the cover-up. Stop the retaliation against families advocating for their children and retaliation against children. Start with honesty, transparency, and working together so that we realize and solve the problem. We need qualified people in charge of sped at the district and on campuses, not warm bodies in meetings. We have a backlog of evaluations. We have children being denied sped who qualify. We have various allocations of state dollars. We have no idea what they're going to or have gone to. This administration is not being honest or transparent, and we are not focusing on solving the problems. I'm not even sure they're qualified to solve the problems, and I don't think that they care. If my experience is any indicator, they don't mind harming children and paying legal fees to violate families' rights. More of the same brings more of the same. Trustees, district leadership, protect our most vulnerable.
My name is Gudels. I'm a bus monitor. I believe that drivers and monitors should keep the pay raise and the holidays, if nothing else, the federal holidays and the pay raise keep. That's the way you won't be losing drivers or monitors. Thank you.
The Stetson Report documents the unfortunate state of education for students qualifying for special education services in AISD and recommendations about the need to improve in the areas of leadership, instruction, staffing, capacity building, and family engagement, the need to have a vision and plan for increasing the meaningful inclusion of students with disabilities in general education classrooms. It recommends clarity and consistency regarding the district's vision and expectations for students with disabilities, ensuring that services are consistent, there are higher expectations, research-based methodologies, and greater instructional rigor to close the current achievement gap for sped students, and that the general curriculum be the reference point for decision-making for each student with a disability. AISD needs to demonstrate and speak clearly to a goal to meaningfully educate and include students with disabilities. The messaging needs to be clear. When moving toward being a more inclusive district for all students, principals, teachers, parents, and students need to hear it and know it if in fact there is a shift toward inclusion that will be happening in AISD. All should really mean that all educators in AISD are there to serve all students in AISD. This is Deborah Trejo, AISD parent. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name is Dallas, and I am a concerned community member. My concern is that Austin ISD is not adequately accommodating teachers and staff pay. Surrounding districts are increasing their pay between 6% and 7% with new teacher salaries starting at $55,000 to $56,000. AISD is offering a 1% to 2% raise for employees, and with the cost of living dramatically increasing in the area, teachers are living at the poverty line. The average median household income for Austin, Texas, is around $100,000, and teachers have half that income. Majority of teachers pick up a second job to make ends meet, not to mention that the delayed paychecks for the month of May for over 1,000 teachers and staff. Many teachers use their own money to provide supplies for their classroom and have to sacrifice their own personal needs for their, for their classroom. AISD needs to use its funds to help teachers survive in their city. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jessica Wilson, and I'm an AISD sped parent. AISD's Stetson Report recommends that classes should have no more than 13% sped. VOI allows English-speaking classes to exceed the TA maximum number of students, even if it's in a grade level where students are too old to opt into dual language. Our Title I second-grade class exceeds TA-size guidelines and has about seven sped students. It's unsafe and not a good learning environment for anyone. Additional faculty need to intervene on a regular basis, and we see clear signs of depression in our kids. AISD needs to allocate extra teachers in these situations to create safe learning environments and to reduce teacher burnout. Please help schools with high percentages of sped, particularly Title I's and those exceeding TA-max class-size guidelines. We need more teachers and TAs. Thank you for advocating for the kids who need us the most.
Hello, my name is Mandy, and I am an educator with Austin ISD. I'm calling with concerns about low morale, pay scale, and communication and collaboration with the district. This year has been extremely difficult for teachers and students' morale. Asking teachers and administrators to do more work, like extra training, more walkthroughs, and more daily duties leads to quicker teacher burnout and higher turnover rate, and not to mention less time planning to ensure to meet every student's need within the classroom. Due to the new PPFT system, teachers feel that they are failing as educators. With low morale, teachers feel helpless, as if they become the worst teacher yet. Teachers should be appreciated, but the new PPFT is not helping. So let's, honestly, this is setting up teachers for failure. The district should collaborate with teachers and make appropriate evaluation systems to evaluate their education needs. Not only that, we should also help with the pay scales, and it's nearly impossible for a teacher to reach a higher status within the PPFT. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Reverend Miles Brandon, pastor of St. Julian of Norwich Episcopal Church and a clergy leader in Central Texas Interfaith, speaking on Project Gateway, item 5.1. Tonight, AISD will be considering a Chapter 313 application under the name of Project Gateway, which we know little about. Central Texas Interfaith has opposed all Chapter 313 agreements and urges AISD give the community more time to voice its concerns before voting to accept this application. CTI and its Texas IAF sister organizations worked with legislators of both parties this past legislative session to kill the reauthorization of Chapter 313, the state's largest corporate tax giveaway program. Chapter 313 drains over $1 billion a year in potential funding for public schools in Texas. AISD itself loses $10 million per year in potential funding due to Chapter 313. Current Chapter 313 legislation expires in December 2022, and we're now seeing a gold rush of applications before the program dies. AISD prides itself on community input. We urge trustees hold off on accepting this application while the community has time to speak. Thank you, and thank you for your work on our, on our community's behalf.
Hey, good afternoon, AISD. My name is Victor Albert. I'm a school bus driver at the South Terminal, and I'm talking about our concerns. I would like AISD keeps our salary increase planning for July 1st, and also, please, 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 keep the holiday pay also. Have you noticed, yeah, being tough for all you because drivers, they are quitting. So it's making hard for AISD staff to comply every single day of work. So please, once again, I would like to, you analyze the situation with the salary, and I would like to keep the salary increase and keep the holiday pay, please. We need to live in this expensive world, and we comply.
Good afternoon. My name is Helen Noor, President Rodriguez, School Board Trustees, and Superintendent. I have more questions and comments. I'd like to know how many special ed students are reading on grade level. I've been trying to get the answer for this since October 21. Where are the mental health and psychology staff at AISD? Why is there four vacancies in the special education department? Where are the behavior specialists? Why one LSSP has its service to campus? Why wasn't the special ed teachers brought back to the Alternative Learning Center? We were told they would be, the special education department said they, they would be back on the campus. Why is Human Resources creating new job positions when we're laying off employees and creating associate superintendent position? Why each high school does not have a social service specialist? These are some things that I would like.
My name is Miguelina Blackman, and I am a school bus driver. I would like the district to continue paying for our holidays and also giving us the pay increase that all the bus drivers and classified employees deserve. Once again, my name is Miguelina Blackman, and I would like to invite the Board of Directors to visit my base and come and ride my route with me. I love what you do, and I hope to see you soon, face-to-face. Thank you.
My name is Linda Myers, and I have two children in Austin Independent School District. I have grave concerns that the most vulnerable children in this district are not being served or cared for. My own daughter has been waiting for her evaluation since December 2020. My family is actually moving out of state. We're leaving Texas, and this is high on our list of reasons why. Please address these issues as soon as possible. Thank you.
Trustees, this concludes public comment. Are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Anderson.
So I have a couple. One caller mentioned about the bus driver and holiday pay. Just can follow up with me. Why drivers only and why not all classified staff was one of, two of the questions that were asked. Oh, okay. Next, a caller mentioned PPFT and teacher compensation, about the challenges with it. Just more information on how the PPFT previous and the change, how it will impact teachers. And lastly, the comments of Ms. Miller, can someone please follow up with her? Because she had a ton of questions that I didn't get to capture all. Thank you.
Trustee's other, trustee Singh.
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on what trustee Anderson was asking related to bus drivers. So I know that AISD is proposing to put an additional $1 million into bus driver pay, and we know that this will, this historic investment will allow us to increase the pay to $21 an hour, but it would withhold the holiday pay. So I would like to request the administration share with us a proposal or a calculation of what the minimum pay would be if we were to continue with the holiday, the paid holidays, but still stay within that $1 million investment from the district. Is that something we could get? Okay. Would we be able to get that? When would, do you think we might be able to receive that?
Dr. Mays.
Yes, and I see Ms. Stevens back there, so I'm pretty sure there's a timeline that she would be able to speak to, but we can definitely get you the proposal.
Okay. All right. Are staff not going to be answering questions today? Oh.
It's not, but it's clarification questions. I don't know if you, if you have a short, brief response.
I just want to know when we could, when we might be able to get that. That's all.
So the question is when, the timeline?
Yeah, we could probably get it by Thursday, if we just take that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And then the other question, you don't have to answer, y'all don't have to answer now, but this was related to special education at ALC. One caller asked about that, and I would love to know if the administration uses the same formulas to staff ALC, in particular, special education, that they use for our comprehensive high schools. And if, if so, has there been thought into maybe adjusting that because ALC is such a unique population?
Just so we don't have dead silence, yes, we can work on that for you. I know that that's something that we have in, in process now, because I know that we've gotten those questions for you, so we'll have that for you, too.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Dr. Mays.
Thank you, trustee Singh. Trustee Boswell.
I have one further clarification about the bus drivers, and again, don't need to know now, but would love that shared when you share information in response to trustee Singh and trustee Anderson's questions. One of the callers said that the increase, when you met individually with the drivers, was based on an eight-hour day, and that most bus drivers, I know we've talked about most bus drivers, work a shorter day than that. So if you can clarify what those, whether those calculations were based on their actual schedules or a different schedule, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Boswell. And just a clarification question, I guess, from my governance viewpoint, and I think we've worked on it as a board, whenever we ask, whenever, and just for the benefit of the public, when a board member asks a question, usually the response comes to all the trustees. So I'm glad you asked for clarification, trustee Boswell. Trustees, any other questions or clarifications? If, trustee Zapata.
So we had, we had several callers still very concerned about this sped report. Lot of questions still. So can there be an opportunity to, to just, to have, to meet with more of these callers? Because they also asked about still not having a clear understanding and a vision and strategy for sped, for the sped students. So is that something that can be done?
Dr. Mays?
Yes, ma'am. I see Ms. Casas saying yes, so we can definitely do that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zapata. And actually, our next item will be all about the Stetson Report, so we'll have another opportunity there. Trustees, any other questions or clarifications? If not, I want to thank you for the questions and clarifications. As a reminder to our public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Our first item tonight is an overview of the evaluation of the district conducted on the Special Education Department and Program in Austin ISD. Dr. Mays?
So to, to address the elephant in the room, I know many of you are looking for Dr. Lozaldi. She's actually right over there. And so tonight, our fearless leader is actually being challenged by Pink Eye, and she wanted to be able to protect our board members, so she's keeping a bit of social distance. So thank you, President Rodriguez. Tonight, we are joined by Stetson along with our chief academic officer, Elizabeth Casas, and executive director for special education, Dr. Teresa Orocha-Gill, for an overview of the recently completed review. At the start of the 2019-2020 school year, the district contracted with Stetson and Associates to conduct a staffing review of special, of the Special Education Department. Due to COVID and the leadership changes, the evaluation was placed on pause. This year, Stetson was able to resume, resume campus and classroom visits and discussions with staff and completed the review in March. And so today, we'll have Ms. Casas and the team from Stetson sharing with us their findings. And so I know we've been waiting on this, and so I know we probably have a little bit of excitement around this. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Casas.
Thank you, Dr. Mays, and good evening, Board President Rodriguez and Board of Trustees. It's exciting to be here tonight to talk about where we are. Tonight, we are talking about the results of the evaluation of our special education program, which started in 2019. And as Dr. Mays said, there was a delay due to COVID, but it's been finalized. We have the report. So we'll talk about the findings and also the district's response and future plans. I do want to just kind of point out that every month when we talk about progress towards our goals, that when we look at our students who receive special education, they continue to be one of the lowest-performing student groups, as you've heard from the parents, right? There's a lot of room for improvement. And as a reminder, pre-pandemic, the percent of students that were on grade level or above in elementary, it was 27% of our students receiving special education compared to 53% at the all group. And then when we looked at our middle-of-the-year MAP data for third-grade reading, we had 20% of our students reading on grade level for students who receive special education compared to 44% at the all. So we continue to see about half of the students performing who receive special education services compared to the all group. So we have a lot of room for improvement. And so I do want to point out tonight, in the audience, we have all of our school leadership, the assistant, associate superintendents, executive directors, you have our curriculum team, you have our systems of support, you have our special ed team. We all wanted to show a united front because we know that we have to do things differently, and the only way to do that is marching united, everybody working together. So they're all here in the audience to hear the same thing so that you can see that we are going to, we are going to get this done. Our kids will receive better services from our district because we are committed. So tonight, I want to introduce, you know, Dr. Orocha-Gill is our executive director for the special ed department, and Dr. Francis Stetson from Stetson and Associates. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stetson.
Thank you. President Rodriguez, members of the Board, and.
Oh, there. Is that better? Okay. Thank you. President Rodriguez, members of the Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Lozaldi, I'm so glad to see you, and I think we probably all appreciate you keeping your pink eye over there, so that's great.
Except for Laura.
Yes. Let me jump right into this, as we've all said. You know, this has been something that we've all been waiting for because of all the different reasons, that it was difficult to get into schools and sit and observe classrooms and look at instructional practices. So, phew, we are so glad to be able to bring you this report because it's so important. And the folks in the, behind me represent certainly the importance. I hoped for this. As an evaluator, you come into a school district, and you really hope that you see the opportunity to present to the Board of Trustees, certainly the superintendent and their cabinet. And, and I would start by saying that, that the, some of the concerns that we're going to be talking about tonight, and we're going to be very honest and very open about them, that I feel a great sense of, of excitement that the, what I've tried to do in the report is really isolate the critical, most important actions, that if they're taken, it's going to really facilitate fairly rapid improvement of results for children. And the first thing that you want is this kind of united front. For decades, we've seen children with disabilities as being a separate population, often pulled out of general ed classrooms and so on. So let's just jump in and say that part of what I've had created for, for myself and then for you, and I started writing the report, is here's, here are your services for children with disabilities, and here are some of the big rocks, the big things that jump out at you, that if these were addressed, would make a tremendous difference. First of all, you have, I'll start with, I think, maybe the, the compliance, you, the bottom little circle there. The status for this district, it needs assistance in. circle there. The status for this district, it needs assistance in regard to your status for evaluation of services for, for students and disproportionality. Now, you can't be a good district if you're not in compliance, and so we all know that. And so that becomes a real priority for you. So that's one of the things that jumps out at you. The other thing that several of you have mentioned that becomes a, a big rock, is the fact that children with disabilities, with an IP in your district, have not met the minimum standard for, for their, for their group for the past four years, and have a rating of three. Not a good thing, not a good place to be. And clearly, that really puts a lot of priority on what we're talking about tonight. That's going to, all of these circles, I think, are going to be your bellwether measures. As you move forward and implement strategies, are we seeing changes in these data? So I think that'll be very helpful to you. The, one of the things I'd like to move over to in the staffing, is the adult-to-student ratio, 1 to 13, is lower than the state average, the education service center average, or you chose comparison districts. And I want to comment there. One of the challenges that you have is that we didn't interview anyone, or conduct a single focus group, that every, almost everyone in the group didn't say we need more staff. We've got to have more staff. We don't have enough staff. And that's the reason for the low achievement scores and so on. Well, I'm in a somewhat uncomfortable position in front of you tonight, because I would tell you that, one of the first things that we're going to look at, and I'm going to give you some results here, is are, is it that you're not well-staffed, or is it we're not using the staff we have effectively and appropriately? Are they well-trained? Are they able to be effective in their roles? And so we're going to look at some pretty hard data that's going to suggest that it's not a matter of throwing more staff at a problem, but using what we have in much more effective ways in delivering really quality instruction. So I'll show you my numbers, and you'll see and have a chance to ask questions. The, another issue is that, of great interest to me, because of the tight school district budgets, and because very often, special education is blamed for really driving the budget up, because it's a costly, often a costly program, is that your annual expenditure for students with disabilities is, on average, it's higher than the state, higher than Region 13, and higher than your comparison schools, districts, but it's almost $1,000 more per child than the average in the state. So that's another big rock. We have a lot of staff, we're spending a lot of money, and yet our children are not performing well, are not learning. And so what are, where the thing, what do we look to, to say, what did our firm find? When? We did interviews, we, we conducted focus group meetings, we were, did interviews in the central office. We really did a good deal of that, because, and one of the things I'm really proud of, is that our firm will not do an evaluation if we don't also have access to observations in classrooms. You have to know what's happening in the classroom in order to be able to answer the questions that I've heard you and our public ask tonight. So with that in mind, here are some of the issues that I would like to share with you. Now, the way we're going to do this tonight, I'm very pleased about. And that is, yes, I have the findings from the report. You've been waiting a long time. I'm, I have them for you. But we're going to do some of this in tandem, because one of the things that often happens when you do a report like this, is you don't take the time to present what also, what the department has been doing in order to correct it. So that's almost necessitates you at another meeting and so on, rather than putting the two together. So Dr. Gill and, and her group have prepared some slides as well, that we're going to look at. Because as we look at the various categories, which you're going to see in a minute, there were about five giant categories that emerged. And so under that, the department is prepared tonight to give you an idea of where they've started, what they're doing, and what their future, what they look for in the future. So that way, this is great. You're going to have a full, a full report, a full sense or a picture of where you are now, and where you still need to go. With that in mind, I'm going to say that when I sat down to write this report, and, and I sat back after I looked at it, and I said, this report almost wrote itself. The issues that are true for Austin ISD are so obvious, and they're so consistent across groups, and they're, it just almost wrote itself. It said, here are the issues that the district really must attend to in order to change outcomes for children with disabilities. So some of those are, what you have in, in our material, is, as you've often mentioned, an inconsistent vision and practice. Now, that doesn't happen overnight, and you've had changes in leadership, but that's one of the biggest things that is a barrier for you. If there's no clear vision, there's no mission, there's no accomplishment of the goals of the organization. Now, you don't do that overnight, and you have new folks, and it takes time to do this. But what I'm pleased about, and I presented in my report, is there are very clear standards for quality in our country and the world for serving children with disabilities. So it's not something you're going to have to dream up on your own, or your staff will. There are fabulous guidelines about what should services for children with disabilities look like in 2022. So there's a lot of work done in that regard. We'll talk more about it. The other piece that you obviously grabbed right away, is you've got to change to close the achievement gap. Now, part of the problem is low expectations, and this is true across the country. We have very low expectations, generally speaking, about children with disabilities. But I'm going to give you a couple of, some data in just a minute, that, that will, will probably surprise many of you. But we've, we have an opportunity to have a very high percentage of our children with disabilities performing at grade level. But what are we not doing that's making that impossible? So we'll talk about that in a minute. But clearly, that is a, a major piece of this. Now, I'm going to tell you that I'm, something I'm proud of, that I couldn't have said 20 years ago. I spent all my career working with inclusive practices, least restrictive environment. I could not have said with confidence 20 years ago, that when you implement the strategies for inclusive practices, you raise all boats. That what happens is, you're looking at improved instructional delivery, you're looking at better use of your staff collaboratively, and all the various aspects. So we shouldn't just see improvements for children with disabilities. We should see that for their peers as well. So when I look at, at the whole issue of student performance, I'm excited, because when you look at your, your performance for children that are, you're characterized as children, general education students, then you're seeing that that's a need as well in Austin ISD. And so this should, should be a real compatible kind of a goal. One of the things related to that is that you're familiar with the term multi-tiered systems of support. Would anybody like me to run over the reason or the definition? Are we kind of good with that? We're good with, yeah, okay. What?
Dr. Stetson, thank you. I would love for you to define that for people who don't live in this all the time. I think that would be very helpful for anyone who happens to be watching. Thank you.
What you're normally seeing, I'm going to move ahead real quick. What you normally see, okay, there it is, is our, look at our triangle there. This is really, really important. Originally, multi-tiered systems of support is supposed to be in something that every district, my opinion, but not just mine, those who really look at quality standards, every district should have a systemic process, where if a student is struggling in school, we don't rush to label them as a child with a disability, but we have a process in place where we analyze, where is the student struggling? What supports do they need? Do we have services in the, well, and I'm going to stop there. Do we need to improve services inside the general ed classroom? Maybe this hasn't anything to do with the fact that perhaps a new teacher has very poor positive behavioral support approaches, doesn't scaffold their instruction well, uses whole group instruction all day long. Are there things that would benefit the child without even looking anywhere else? And you and I have that right to not have our lives intervened in, in any way but the least drastic means. And so often, we see a child struggling, and we go, ah, 911 referral. Well, a multi-tiered system of support says you don't go from point A to Z. You say, if a child is struggling, does Austin Independent School District have a process where teachers and our parents can refer a child for consideration for where are they struggling and what needs to be provided? Now, there are two problems for Austin right now, I think, that we want to talk about. One is that this model is absolutely vital to being proactive and preventative for every child. It's not a special ed model to begin with. It's just good instruction. But you have a fairly, at this point, and I have no doubt you're working toward that, but put a big star there, you don't yet have district-wide, consistent from school to school, or level-to-level process, so that we all know when a child is struggling, we have a protocol in place where we are going to problem solve for that child. Instead, we try to, like, sort them into programs, or services, or labels. So that is, that is critical. Now, when we asked the people that we interviewed and observed, we'd say, what, tell us about your MTSS system, your multi-tiered system of supports, because as you see, the reason it's called multi-tiered is a child is identified at an early level, and then there's a series of supports that are tiered that become more and more intensive. And the top intensive would be special education and other label-driven kinds of programs. So the typical response was, what MTSS? So some schools said, yes, we have one, and they talk about it. And most other schools say, no, we, we don't have that. And so if I were to put on my list, and I did, of the things that would make such a difference very quickly, it would be having a multi-tiered system of supports. Because children, there, there's an alternative to that, and it's called wait to fail. And so we want to have a robust system of supports. Now, there's another thing that's important about that diagram. I'm actually skipping in my presentation, but I get emotional about this one, so I'm going to start there. The other thing that's real important to notice is, please look for a minute at tier one, the one at the bottom. That is something that's really critical, and it says that there are sets of strategies that every Austin ISD teacher should possess, competencies, and that every child shall have opportunity to have in the general education classroom. I'll name you a few. Differentiating instruction, flexible grouping, not everything is whole group, better use of academic learning time, like, we really walk in, boom, we start teaching, and the standards-based instruction. The other one is using scaffolds, that most of our children, the diversity that we're seeing in our classrooms today, needs some level of scaffolding. You're looking at a person that while I've been in school a lot of my life, I would still be back in third grade if I didn't have teachers who taught me and gave me visual representations of what I was learning. If I can see it, I can learn it. If it's just auditory, I simply don't learn it at all. Every teacher in Austin ISD needs this collection of a few, you can name your own, but they're research-based, they're well-known, that every teacher ought to offer that, that tier one instruction. There is a phrase that gives me goosebumps. It goes like this, and it came out when, when MTSS was just born. Said, "A child shall not be found eligible for and in need of special education on the basis of poor instruction in the general education classroom." Just let that sit a minute. Because from that springs, the expectations we should have for every teacher, not just a general ed teacher, but also our special populations teachers, every teacher should be adapted certain sets of strategies that need to be in place. I'll get to what we saw in a minute, but let's just leave it at that point to say that one of the biggest, I think, most powerful things that could be done, is that I believe you do have, you have someone in charge of it, I believe, for MTSS. You have, you have some rudimentary, or perhaps even more sophisticated, models in place. But what's the concern is, it's not system-wide, and it's not systemic, therefore, and it's, it's, a child is disadvantaged by being in the neighborhood with this school versus that one, because this one doesn't have it, and this one does. So any large district, and complex district like Austin ISD, this is a multi-year, constant development of a process, so that everybody's consistent. So I'm going to whip right back to my little boxes very quickly, because I think that'll help us get through the material a little quicker. But that would be one I would put a star on. That's very, very important. The, the, one thing we're going to talk about is that a lot of people think that you, you, we've already talked now, that I've said, in many of your schools that we visited, they were overstaffed. Now, nobody said that, nobody thinks that. They're concerned that they need more staff. But I, I believe that there's a question that I like to work with educators around. More staff to do what? If we're just throwing more staff because a child is having difficulty, well, let's put him in, let's put a parent educator beside him, and let's add so on and so forth. If you're not able to articulate the supports that student needs, and how they should be provided, and then decide where staffing is needed, then we're not really achieving the results for the student. So you're seeing a theme here, right? Systems, systems in place. I will say that everyone that I've visited here cares about kids. They want to do the right thing. They have great hearts, and they're good, some of them are excellent educators. And, and, and so I feel very positively about that, but the systems are lagging behind the, the delivery of the services, I think. Now, one of the things that is a couple of circles, and then I'm going to move on. The one about capacity building, this makes me just so frustrated, I think, right now, and I bet you feel the same. In education today, we have less time for building capacity for our teachers and our principals, at a time when there's never been a time that they need sharper, better, more research-based strategies. There are those that really work, and those that just don't. And so part of what every district that I'm working with right now, across the country, has had, has said, is they've cut corners in the capacity building, the professional development, the coaching, and so on, because we got to serve the children, which is absolutely the case. But what's happening is that we now have a workforce that has often had such small and, and not systemically identified and delivered professional development, that we're not able to be effective. So it feels like we need more staff, when actually, maybe I need more skills. So I won't go over any of the, they're all important up there. I, I think that, and you'll hear later, the district is doing some good things too, with helping enhance the parent voice, which is always a challenge, it needs to be done. But I would say, the only one I want to talk about just a little bit, is, and I, I've heard there's the concerns that, and I would want to be sure that the Stetson report, no one thinks that, that we recommended following ratios for staffing. The only way to determine what staff you need is on the basis of student needs, one at a time. Darn. You know, wouldn't it be great if you said, if you have six children with this particular disability label, you need one of those, and one of these, and you can staff it? But that's not the case, because every child is individualized, and it's promised an idea. So I want to talk to you about in a minute, we'll talk about the fact that there's a huge system of, of first, looking at the instructional and behavioral needs first, and then aligning your staffing on the basis of those needs. And I truly believe, and we'll get into that now, in that, that we could do so much better for the students by being careful, and, and more precise, and more focused about the way we assign staff. Okay. So these were the five categories that emerged, and I said the report could write itself, and we're going to talk about each one rather quickly. The vision, again, we're lucky, we have quality standards. Let's look at those. I would say something very nice about the superintendent that I heard. I was eager to meet her, I had not met her before. But I always, we have to look at the, the visioning in a district, because you have to know, do we all, are we all headed down the right path, and the same path? And over and over and over again, your superintendent was cited as saying, oh, she believes in quality instruction, inclusive practices, really being individualized in terms of your, of your practices. Heard this over and over and over again. So what I would say is, that's fabulous. Now, what are the systems that you can put in place, as you did, Dr. Casas, tonight, to have everyone in the room to hear this at the same time, so that you have that more of the opportunity to develop a common vision? So you have it at the top, but you have to build those systems that really inculcate that. So you have it at the top, but you have to build those systems that really inculcate that. I'm going to say it like two sentences, and we're going to move on about this, but, but we could spend all night. Part of our problem is that historically, we've been a very segregated school, schools across the country. There are children, and then there are the special ed children. And we say, "Those children," or "Your children," not "My children." And one of the things that we must begin to develop is a sense of shared ownership for every child, regardless. And so that's something that, that needed to be. And then, I would tell you that the quickest way I know there's not a shared vision is that there's a lot of diversity and difference from school to school to school in terms of concepts about what are quality standards. So again, those quality standards, there's a, a really great set of those, list. I use them all the time. And I think that's a way to improve communication, coordination, and consistency across your campuses. And I think we need to be clear with principals. This is what a quality school looks like when it serves children, diverse learners, effectively and efficiently. So, using those for that purpose. I'm not going to go, I'm going to just tell you that in your report, I took the time to write down three or four critical best practice, effective practice. But I would say that the comments from the public and so on are mirrored on this slide because of the need for a common vision beyond the superintendent, but articulated throughout all the different departments. And also, I would say that the, one of the biggest issues that emerged is the, the, how, it was often described this way. The relationship between the department and principals is fractured. There's a disconnect between what the department is trying to accomplish and the information that the principals and the campuses have about what services should look like. And you really see that when you visit the schools and you interview the principals. And so again, those quality standards would be very helpful. I did have a chance to talk to your principals. I kind of forced my way into their training session. My, my, my staff was training, and I said, "I want to come, and I want the first hour." And so I did talk with the principals that day about, I'm going to use the word which I wrote on my notepad when I was listening to the introductory part. What you'd almost have to characterize in what you were hearing is a lack of trust. Now, lucky for all of us, it, it's not easy, but trust can be mended. And both camps, oh, sorry, both groups have got to, to put down some past, lay it behind them, and begin to work together, and have, and build that trust. Because without it, it becomes a competitive issue versus a cooperative one on behalf of children. So, I hope, I, I believe that these are great people. I, I enjoyed my, my hour with the principals and how they responded to it. But I'm, I'm thinking, the department has a lot of work to do in terms of leadership. But I am going to say, and I, 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 I said it in the report, I felt a little guilty getting so tough with the department because of the change of leadership within three years. There's been, if I understand it, three different changes of leadership in three years. Well, that just means we got to really support the leaders in that department, and the principals, and have them more, more visibly together for planning and so on. So I, I could go on forever about that, but I won't. In fact, you have to stop me if you're like bored to death, or if I've said too much about something. But, that's a really critical one. Now, I just wanted to put up a few of the slides for the survey results. This took us a while to get the surveys, but I was so delighted. Now, I want you to look at, the question number three was that special ed service department provides strong leadership. It was one of the lowest, it was the lowest rated question in the survey. Are consistent, not at all. But I will tell you something interesting and kind of unusual. The questions that were asked of faculty about inclusive education, my goodness, you had some very positive results. For example, "It's a priority," again, the district-level vision. But the other one, look at number six. "My experience in implementing inclusion has been positive." Wow, wow. So, good, because when that's really low, you have dickants of a time redirecting and beginning to implement those practices. Now, I will tell you, the one that matters the most to me out of all of these right here is number seven. I ask this question in every district we work in across the country. It is, "Do general ed students benefit when special needs students are educated in the same classroom?" Look how high your percentage of agreement is, eighty-six percent. Now, in many, many districts, the results are about fifty-fifty. But if educators believe and, and know that there's a benefit, your job is, and the district's job is so much easier in implementing those quality practices. So, and so, now, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gill for these next two slides, because she's going to be able to tell you what the district has done with regard to leadership, that first of the five.
The special education department has a working draft of a strategic plan. And we are going to meet with our department leadership team this month, as well as our campus department chairs, to review the draft of our strategic plan. In addition to that, we are going to meet with two different parent and community groups this month as well, to review and get input with regard to the strategic plan. But I want to share with you our, our leadership goal that is tied to what Dr. Stetson has been talking to us about. And our goal is strong district leadership, integrating the department into the fabric of the district. And so, where we are now in terms of the reality, the things that we did this year, we've provided responsible scheduling, training, and continuum of supports, training, to all of our principals and to our department team with the help of Stetson consultants. So that we wanted to reach all of our principals initially. And as you see, when we move forward, we're going to be reaching out to our general education teachers and our special education teachers. But we feel that the, that the principals are the instructional leader of their campus, and we want to ensure that when we talk about effective scheduling practices and the continuum of supports, that they had a good foundation and could understand what we meant with regard to those two areas of training. This year, I'm very happy to say that we have integrated ourselves into school leadership and principal meetings. We are part of their meetings, and they have been very receptive and have actually carved out time for us whenever we need it. We have worked with the human capital department to increase the number of staff in our evaluation team. As you know, it is very critically low, but we have retention recruitment efforts that have increased the contract days for our, for our evaluation staff, and have provided a sign-on bonus, as well as, if they, if any of our staff are willing to supervise some of our interns, they will receive a stipend for that support as well. We also are working to improve our relationships with local universities and community groups. And we met with the communication department recently. We realized that we have to rebrand our department and send out much more communication to our parents, our community members, as well as the district itself. And so, those are the things that we did this year. And when we talk about the strong district leadership goal, it aligns with the value statement of the district that talks about educational equity. And we, we want educational equity to ensure that every child receives what they need in order to develop their full potential. We believe that every child is a general education child first, and those children that are identified as students with disabilities receive services that are above what a general education student gets. In terms of our vision, where we want to go with the goal of leadership, we want to continue, this coming school year, training efforts so that we extend our, our Stetson trainings, excuse me, to include our general education teachers and our special education teachers. We want to establish campus support teams so that they work together and plan actively for the things that need to change in order for the school to become more inclusive. We also want to provide ARD and IEP decision-making process trainings to all groups, principals, teachers, all members, active members of the ARD committee membership, so that they understand what their role is, what the expectations are. And of course, we want to extend that training to our parents, because they are active members in our ARD committees as well. We want to revisit the MTSS process with district leadership as well, so that we can make it stronger. And we also want to collaborate with the district leadership to improve our Tier 1 instruction. So those are our, our goals for the future.
All right, all right. This, I, I touched on just a touch, and that's the second big, bold piece, and that's, that's instruction. I don't need to go back over, but the MTSS system, and making certain that that Tier 1, those Tier 1 strategies are in place. The observed strategies, practices, we went into a number of classrooms with a structured tool. And we found predominantly whole-group instruction, rather than some flexible grouping, and a few scaffolds. Again, most children were given the same activity to do to, to achieve that learner outcome, without graphic organizers, vocabulary banks, all the different things that children, not just with a disability, but most any child would benefit from, from, from learning. So, that, that's a need across the board. One of the things that is a concern is minimal collaboration between general ed and special ed teachers. Again, it goes back to, everybody said, "We don't have time." Well, you're paying a lot of money, and you have a lot riding on the success of those teachers for those children. And if teachers are not provided some protected planning time, then they arrive in the classroom saying, "What are we doing today, and what's my part?" And so you're not getting the true impact of, of the teachers in the classroom working together. Because one of the things that happened is that when we brought children with disabilities back to the general ed classroom, we also expected that those supports would follow. Not stay down the hall, but to follow. And so in order for that to be effective, there has to be collaborative planning time. And then a word about the classrooms where you have children who are, for part of the day, not in the general ed class at all because of the severity or the particular needs of their disabilities. We really need to look at the rigor of what's happening in those classrooms. Because some of it could be characterized as playtime. There's puzzle time, there's, you know, nap time, well, many of our children have very low stamina, so certainly you don't count against it. But if there's always puzzle time, solve the, the riddle time, and, and that, and the activities are not designed to increase the ultimate independence and success of those children, then we're wasting their time, what we have to really do. So in some of the classrooms, I would say that the district needs to really drill down and look at the quality standards again for what should happen outside of the general education classroom. Another important piece. More quality standards. Now, I just want to take a minute with this, because there's been a mention about what our firm is doing. We need to train our, we are engaging with you all in training your principals and teams from the schools. And what we decided, determined years ago, and it improves every few years, we add something new, is this is the process that we wish that every child with a disability had going on for them in the IEP meetings, or the pre-IEP meetings, with their family and with educators. I'll share a statistic with you that I said I would earlier on this evening, that's kind of shocking to a lot of people. The, there's a, a report that's cited in your, in your final program evaluation report, the Heckenjäck report, came out about four years ago, and it said that approximately ninety percent of children with a disability should, with appropriate instruction, be able to master on-grade level instruction. What? Think about it. So I'm always having to show why I believe that to be true, but why the Heckenjäck report and other educational researchers support it. I don't have a visual for it, but I want you to think for a minute. Over half the children that are identified in special education today have a learning disability. Well, for most children, even though there's a range of severity of that, the, the general curriculum should be the standard for those children. Okay, the next big pie piece out of that whole circle of children with disabilities is children with speech-only issues. What's the right curriculum for them? The general curriculum. So you can go around that, that information, it's in your report, there's a, a nice visual of it. But when you look, there are very few populations today of children, I'm not saying there are few children, but few of the, of the categories of disability that really represent a significant intellectual or cognitive disability that would prohibit them from learning or mastering at least what Doug Carnine calls "the big idea" of the concept. So I'm just putting this up here to show you, this is what our, our objective process, and you're going to see how it ends up with, with, if you do or do not need staffing. The first question to ask, remember, every child's a general ed student who may, some may need supports. Can the student participate in the activity as designed? If it's terrible Tier 1 instruction, and not all of those, those practices, maybe not. But should, what should we do to make, to add to that instruction in the general class that makes it robust? If not as designed, is there Tier 1 instruction? Are there good strategies, like differentiated instruction, positive behavioral supports? Now, this is big, the third piece. If that's not sufficient, children with disabilities have the opportunity to have an accommodation. This is very big, this is a slippery slope. An accommodation doesn't change about anything, about what they're learning. It changes how they learn it. I could learn a lot of, I mean, well, maybe not a lot, but I could get into thermonuclear design of plants if you gave me a graphic organizer. I wouldn't be great at it, and you shouldn't turn me loose with it. But I would understand the concepts and the practices. An accommodation does that. And that's something that children with an IEP have the right to have us ask, "Does this child need an accommodation?" Now, here's a sad thing. In looking, an objective observation of the classrooms in Austin ISD so far, we are often failing to give children the accommodations that were promised in the IEP meeting. So that right there would account for a significant increase in performance of children. Right there, that one thing. If that's not sufficient, then you can modify instruction. Is technology needed? If no, and behavioral supports. Now, guess where, step number seven. The last thing you ask, not because you don't want the child to have it, but because that's the sequence it belongs in, is, "Does this student, given those supports, need staffing to provide those services?" And look, lo and behold, I have to say, I was in Washington, I'm so old that I was in Washington DC working with the Department of Ed when IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, was passed. And this is exactly aligned with the federal legislation. You are absolutely aligned if you follow this sequence of questions. So, that's something that we need to teach, and our, all of our educators. Okay, there are some interesting questions here. But I want you to notice, this, this makes me nuts, but it's everywhere. Question number 12. Our faculty uses instructional accommodations appropriately for any student who needs them. Seventy-seven percent said yes. In our observations of the classrooms visited, I would say it was around fifteen to twenty percent. What a huge opportunity this district has. Through training and monitoring, to make a tremendous difference for student learning. All right, so here is, that's a big, that's a huge subject of instruction. But, Dr. Gill, talk about what you've done for, in this category, please.
In the area of instruction, our strategic goal is all students will receive strong Tier 1 instruction with multi-level supports. And so in terms of where we are now in our reality, this year we did collaborative classroom visits with Office of School Leadership. We did review the existing supports and resources that we have in our classrooms. And we noticed that the PLC process also changed a bit and incorporated and incorporated the needs of all learners to include map growth and targets. And so for me, the PLC process means to make progress personal. We want to start looking at individual growth, the work and the skill levels of our individual students with disabilities and see where do we need to go with them. And so this particular goal aligns itself very well with the value statement of the district with regard to academic excellence. And if you look at the next slide, where do we want to be? We want to have strong tier one instruction supported by DI instructional practices and strategies. And we also want to move from remediation skills that you often see in resource classes to strong tier one instruction in those settings as well. And of course, to move as many of our children into inclusive settings where they can get the supports that they need. And we also realize that we have to have collaborative projects with the Office of Academics. And we want to develop a strong relationship and partnership with the school leadership team to support the refinement of inclusive practices.
With the third, this is the one I found one of the most exciting. I mentioned earlier that everybody we talked to said you need more staff. Well, I'm going out, I'm not going out on my, it may be considered a limb, but I think it's a pretty firm limb here. Let me show you a table that we pulled together from the data that's available on the TEA website for every district. And so we did a comparison. Those are the districts that Austin is, of course, our reference point here. Seifair, Dallas, Fort Bend, Fort Worth, Houston, and San Antonio were the comparisons districts. Notice that the next to last column, teacher ratio to student with disability. Now, this is not a decision point because you don't use ratios. You use that several questions that we talked about to determine if an individual child needs support. But look at the range on this chart. Of Texas is one to seven, one teacher to 17, or one adult to 17 kids with an IEP. Region 13 is one to 14. Austin is one to 13. And if you look at the rest of the districts, there's, they're, well, what would I say? They're quite a bit of variance among them. But that Austin is lower than all but one. Now, an odd thing happened. Oh, the other thing is that there was, of course, who knows today what that data will look like? But everyone's concerned about teacher turnover. So from the TEA data, actually, Austin's, not everyone thought that turnover data was huge. And actually, it's pretty much, it's even lower than some of the other districts. But what I'd like to show you is something that kind of odd when I sat down to write the report. There were, the districts that we randomly drew to go visit and have all the classroom visits, not the districts, pardon me, the campuses in Austin, we interviewed the principal. And we said, when we walked in the door, how many children with special ed students do you have? How many general ed teachers, special ed teachers? And we looked at the adult to student ratio there. And then we added the paraeducators, which you have quite a few of. And then we looked at the, finally, that last column. If, as a principal said, this is how many children that have an IEP in my school. These are the adults, teachers and paraeducators. And if you look, the range is, look at the low number of ratio. One to six, one to seven, well, one to 14, one to six, one to seven, one to five, almost six, one to six, one to seven, one to five, and one to eight. So lower than the one to 13. And so some of the school's staffing data does not, at present, match what TEA says you have in your schools. The reason it's really important is that we look at this number all over the country and report it in our work with the districts. These are very, very low adult to child ratios, very low. And so I have to say, with my very best opinion, and having been in the field for over 50 years, that there are separate sets of questions that you have to ask yourself.
Dr. Stetson, can I interject? On that first school where there's a one to 66 ratio, we did go back. And so the school has actually, instead of four teachers, they have 17 teachers. And instead of 15 paras, they have 18. So the ratio is really a one to eight.
A one to eight, okay. Thank goodness. Well, I appreciate that. Because while we did the interview and got those scores, we said to the district, please go back and check that number because it's so out of whack. Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Kostas. So, so what does this, what, here, when I, when you see something like this and an old educator, here's what I ask instead. Is the instructional delivery research based? Is it evaluated frequently? And is it resulting, or we have robust collaborative planning? If that's not there, then you throw more staff at it. Is our tier one instructional strategies in place? And for the most part, we found in many of the classrooms, they were not. Others, there were. Are there effective scaffolds or accommodations in place? To what extent do teachers share ownership for kids? Or they say, that's your student, he goes down the hall? Or when you come in my classroom, you sit in the back of the room with the young man or the young lady and teach in the back of the classroom because it's not part of my class? Is the request for additional staff reflective of ineffective training for our staff? Or not enough of it? Maybe it's great training, but is there enough of it? And, boo, a big, when you looked at the number of paraeducators in your district? One of the most challenging things nationally, and I've had more superintendents ask for training in this topic because every district is suddenly having way many paraeducators added to the staff, is that we're supposed to train them because they don't have training and instruction, and they're supposed to be closely supervised by the teacher. And very often, our teachers have had no training in how to supervise those paraeducators. So I won't read all of this to you, but the bottom one is kind of an interesting one for you. To what extent is the per pupil expenditure for special ed services a result of overstaffing? Are we spending a lot on buying more staff, but we're not doing the underpinning piece of training, coaching, supervision, and development of principal skills as well? So I just wanted to share with you that it would be a COVID germ evidently, but I thought, when somebody says, we need more staff, I would love to see Austin ISD needs an objective process where you ask the same questions for each student that focuses on what they need. And for parents that are worried tonight that what I'm saying here is that we don't need as many teachers or paras, I'm not, what I'm really saying is, are we reaching decisions about what staff are needed on the basis of what your child needs and robust instruction? I am, I would not, you know, I would not advocate, boom, we have to let half the staff go. I'm not saying that, but I'm saying we have these questions to ask. So if anybody's anxious, please understand that's the framework from which I'm presenting. Okay, I'm not even going to talk about that. Okay?
Okay. Our strategic plan in the area of staffing is this particular goal. Staffing is based on student need and is individually determined. So where are we now and what is our reality? We do have a staffing process that considers student enrollment, student needs, and service needs as well. And we have conducted classroom observations to review and to see how staff is assigned and services are provided. This particular goal, basing staffing on student need and whether or not, and that it is individually determined, represents the district value of aligning resources to student needs. And so where do we want to be? What is our, what is our future and our vision? What we want to do is we want to provide more technical assistance to our campuses regarding responsible staffing and also the scheduling of services for our students. And we also want to implement an objective, student-centered staffing model when we decide how many teachers, how many TAs, what kinds of supports do we need on our campuses.
All right. Well, you're going to be glad to know that these last two, I've particularly spoken to a great deal, so I'm going to just say this. The fourth one I have stated so often. This is true not just for Austin. This is true for every district in the country right now. To what extent can we not afford to provide professional development that's robust, coaching, training of principals and how to support this? Because you have good teachers. You have, I enjoyed our observations. You have some of the best teachers I've observed. But without ongoing training, you, how in the world do you maintain the level of skill that you need? And so every time we say, well, we've brought them out of the, can't bring them out of the classroom, or we can't, what would the difference be in eight or 16 hours to having a whole different level of skill for those teachers when they go back in the classroom? So I think that we have to make some hard decisions because we've kind of gone in favor of not upsetting anything in the classroom. But the problem is now we have serious gaps in teacher capacity. So I'm going to say that I've probably said more than I need to there, but I'm, I wonder, the other thing I would say is that something that you mentioned, Dr. Gill, is I love to see, special ed's not an island unto itself. Think about the partnership of special ed and curriculum and instruction for that professional development. It should not be separate. And the last, oh, I'm sorry, you have other, yes, you do. You have things you've done.
Our next goal in our strategic plan in the area of a capacity building is capacity building for all staff who work with students with disabilities. So in terms of where we are now in our reality, we are providing training to special education teachers. We're using blend courses directly tied to exceptional children library readings. We do provide department chair meetings. We have trainings by consultants, expert consultants, specifically in the area of evaluation. And we do coordinate classroom observations with the Office of Leadership. And so the question here for us in capacity building is, how do we serve better? How do we manage transition and change? And so this particular area, capacity building, is tied to the district's value of a culture of respect, transparency, and data-informed decision-making. And so where do we want to be? What is our future? We want to co-plan and co-deliver sessions designed to increase solid tier one instruction that includes differentiated instructional strategies to reach all of our learners. We want ongoing professional learning on special education topics in collaboration with academics and school leadership teams. And we want to support a district-wide cycle of learning from, all the way from the top, from district leadership to campus support staff. And we must evaluate our systems and not our teachers. We need to improve our systems and support our teachers.
Finally, family engagement. This was really a shocker to me. Very often, I have to write a report for a district and say that we cannot rely on the results of the parent survey because so few surveys were returned. It was not statistically significant. Look at the return rate that you had in Austin. Forty-one percent. I don't know of another district that's had that return rate in, I don't know how long, a very long time, years. And one of the wonderful things is that these, these parents, when you look at their response rates, I mean, their responses, pardon me. Look, 76% of your parents say that their child receives quality services. That's hard to find in many of our districts today. And I know your parents are concerned, all parents are concerned about their quality of services. But I think when you look at this data, you realize they're with you. They want to see this, these improvements. But this is, this is really stunning, really, results. Forty-one percent saying of the total, and 76% of that. So if you look at those numbers as you scroll down and look at the, oh, and look at number 12. My experience in attending ARD meetings in the district has been positive. Wow, 83%. Fabulous. And you can see the answers to the rest of these. I, in your report, I just want to remind you, look at your faculty survey results as well. But in closing, because I believe this is my last, no, it's not. It almost is. But I want the district to talk about, but I want to brag on them a bit. They, when I first met them, they were just beginning to bring parents in for evening meetings and discussions. And I think that hopefully, we're seeing the result of some of that in your parent survey results.
Our last action plan goal is to improve district processes as measured by teacher, family surveys, and focus groups. And where we are now is we do have advisory group and subcommittee meetings. We do receive input from various groups to improve our processes and our services. We do send out a monthly department newsletter that includes strategies and information, one to staff and one to parents specifically. This particular goal aligns itself to the district's value statement of valuing diversity, inclusion, and meaningful engagement of all voices as we strive to improve the common good. And so in terms of where we want to be, we want to increase and improve our communications with family and community involvement efforts in our groups. We also want to present inclusion sessions to parents and also start what we call a Power Hour for Parents series. It was something that was here in the district a long time ago and well-received, where the department would put out different strategies on a weekly basis so parents could get information about disabilities, eligibility services, and just instructional strategies. And so that is something we want to reinstate. We also want, we will be providing training for our new automated IEP system. We will move to a new system that will help our teachers get, create IEP documents in a much easier intuitive manner. And we also want to look at parent-to-parent trainings as well in the future.
All right. The takeaways, we've already talked about. I guess my last quote there is, trust the process. There is a process, there are quality standards. As I close, I would show you a puzzle piece that, puzzle pieces that our firm uses when we look at districts and when we train others. And I think it's a perfect match with Austin. You have to have systems in place, quality instruction, personalized staffing on the basis of student needs, and really authentic collaboration. In Austin's case, that means the department with other departments, the department with principals, the department with parents, and throughout the system. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share these ideas with you. I am very impressed. I, one of my, when I came back from my masters at UT, I was a teacher of children with vision, visual impairments at, we called it back then, at Cassis Elementary School while I was working on my masters. I've always considered myself a quasi-Austin ISD employee. And it's been an honor to meet you and the leadership team and superintendent. I'm very impressed. I just want to say one thing. This district can do this. Yes, you know, we started out with those circles of kind of the bad news. You can do this. There are very clear ways that you accomplish this. And I believe you have the will and the capacity to do it. So you're going to have a little bit of information now, but this is my last word to you unless you have questions. So here are some celebrations from the district.
Just very quickly, we listed three important celebrations. We had a recent visit, and the student records that were reviewed met 100% compliance. And the team that came to visit our six campuses were very complimentary of the principals and the instruction that they did see. In terms of 504 and dyslexia, we did, we were awarded a 1.5. In terms of 504 and dyslexia, we did, we were awarded a $1.5 million grant from the TA Dyslexia Grant Award Program. And this is significant because we will continue to increase the credentialing of our special education teachers to improve and serve students with disabilities in the area of dyslexia, for those students that, that are identified as having dyslexia and also in special education. And then our last celebration is we improved licenses, I'm sorry, increased licenses in the area of Read and Write, which is a literacy support tool. And so we, these licenses will go on iPads, and our students will be able to access different tools in the area of reading and writing. And pro quo will be, we also have licenses, licenses there, and we are going to start this communication service or support in the, in our early childhood programs. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Casas. Thank you, Dr. Orocha Gill and Dr. Stetson for the presentations. Trustees, are there any questions? Trustee Anderson.
Dr. Stetson, when I saw your report, initially it was, it was hard for me to read, but once I finally got through it, you know, it, it confirmed things I already knew. But, you know, my, my experience and many others that I know, your report, it tells a lot, but it doesn't get to the root, which is racism. I can talk to you about my experience in this district. It's been, but, you know, I, I, I want to talk about the system. I'm not gonna, you know, talk about staff because staff has been working hard, and I appreciate every single thing that they do, but I'm going to talk about the system. So how is it, you know, we talk so much about multi-tiered systems of support. How is it you can have a campus that doesn't have one or doesn't know what it is? How, how do you do that? And you make a change to the system and you don't know that piece? How does that happen?
Well, you nailed it. It is, that's the concern for consistency. If we don't have consistency where these resources are everywhere, then the child that's attending those schools is significantly disadvantaged, and it impacts the rest of their lives in many cases. And so if you put an umbrella term around the report or what the topic we're talking about tonight, it's about inclusion versus exclusion. And, and I appreciate your remarks very much, and I agree with them in the sense that that whole phrase that I blithely throw out there is so difficult today and has been for decades. Shared responsibility for all children, not just some, but for all of them. And that is a major priority, I believe, ethically, not only in our schools but in our communities. I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
And I would add that in the past, one of the practices has been a true disconnect. You know, campuses have autonomy, and so our central office teams have been reluctant to say, campuses, you must do X, Y, and Z. And that's why I wanted all of our friends here tonight, because we all need to be speaking the same language. So when we're walking campuses, when we're looking at data, we're making sure that the systems are in place. In Austin, we call the Child Study Team is the process that we have in place. But you're right, it's not being implemented correct, being implemented with fidelity across the district. And so that's incumbent upon Dr. Mays and I to have a unified front to make sure that all students are being served.
So something else I saw missing from the, the system piece. I saw a lot of training, which that's something I've been fighting long before I got on the board. But the piece that I saw missing is the piece of communication from special education, you know, upper management staff to other staff. Because I, I did read that too. Morale, all of that. So those are the pieces I didn't see. How do you plan, or I look forward to hearing your plan on how you plan to increase or, you know, morale in the department? How you plan to improve communication, not only with special education staff, but staff to campus staff and with parents? Because that's another thing I didn't see. You know, a lot of times, you know, parents go into an ARD meeting, and I can go way back, literally, everybody but the janitor would be in there. That's how many district staff would be in there. And for some parents, that's very intimidating. But how do you communicate with that parent to let them know in advance, hey, okay, if we're looking at an evaluation, this is who's going to be in the room? You're letting them know ahead of time, so when they walk in, it's not, wow, oh, I feel so intimidated, which is what typically happens. So what I'm looking to hear, Dr. Orocha Gill and Ms. Casas, is a plan, doesn't have to be now, but I, I would like to hear about, and Dr. Alizade. A plan on how you plan to increase the morale in special education, how you plan to deal with the communication or the lack of communication, and how you plan to bridge that with the campus. Because I do realize there's a, a challenge there too. I don't want to say an issue, but a challenge there too. And how do you plan to hold staff accountable? Not saying, oh, well, you know, you did this one thing, you know, okay. But that one thing continues on and it's not addressed. So how do you plan to handle the accountability but not, not coming off as a dictator? Sorry, I'm just putting it out there. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson, I would say, and Ms. Casas kind of alluded to it, it's the work that we're doing between the Office of School Leadership and the academic scene, like, it's still the phrase from Mr. Hicks, but we have to hold hands on the work, and we have to hold hands with the full implementation of it. And so, you know, like you said, we have to really do a good job of tearing, tearing down silos, getting rid of those walls that have kept us from working with each other. And I know Dr. Orocha Gill kind of spoke to it momentarily, just in talking about how we've invited them into the school leadership meetings and how that training that we're providing for our school leaders, because again, we know, like Dr. Lazzarde would say, is that the teacher is the program. And so that coaching piece is instrumental. And so principals having knowledge of what that should look like in terms of accommodations for students is vital. And so we're going to be holding hands as we walk this work through the system together. Again, getting rid of those walls and those silos that have kept us from doing effective work to meet the needs of our special education students.
Jump back on it. Dr. Stetson, one more thing. So this is something else I've seen. So just say, at the district level, it's, it's time for leveling. What I've seen previous times, don't know if it's still going, but I've seen it, is say, one campus went from four fifth-grade teachers to two. Well, I decide that all of the special education students are going to be in this one classroom. I've seen that. So how do you address that?
Well, there's some very firm, I think, for me, numbers. No, no classroom, general ed classroom should have, my, my rule of thumb, more than the natural proportion of children in it with disabilities. So in your case, there are 13%, 13 to 14% of your children in the district that have an IEP. Then we don't want to see more than that number, that percentage, in any general education classroom. We want to keep it that, otherwise it is no longer an inclusive classroom. It becomes a really, well, a segregated classroom in many ways. So if there are, are those rules in place and you don't violate them, then it may change that some schools, I heard you say leveling, is that the word you used when you began? Right. Well, in some cases, we don't stick to the totals, the firmest rules about leveling. We say, wait a minute. By doing that, what we're doing is we're throwing, we're throwing that rule out and we're creating overloaded classrooms with children that's stigmatizing and less effective instruction. So we don't do that. We're going to look at some different staffing models. The burden's on the system, not the child.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson has told me she's done. Trustees, other questions? Trustee Google.
Thank you for this report, and thank you to Ms. Casas and, are you a doctor? Are you Ms.? Okay. So there are doctors in the house. Dr. Orocha Gill, Superintendent Alizade, Dr. Mays, and all the folks that have been working to, to right the ship. I really appreciate the, the forthright presentation and the fact that you all also, the administration also shared, you know, where are we at? Where do we wish we want, where, where would we like to be? I, for one, would really love to continue seeing over the course, you know, whether it's semi-annually, quarterly, you know, whatever the board calendar needs to be, but to get those updates. Because we didn't get here overnight, right? So it's going to take time and being strategic about those solutions and always, and y'all know this about me, like, always asking, what can we do better? You know, how do we know it works? Right? And so just thank you on that front. A couple of questions. So in thinking about ARDs and evaluations and IEP, you know, all these acronyms, you know, are there, are there any plans or has there been any discussion to maybe put like something really simple together for parents, like a know before you go? Something that breaks it down for us? I swear, if there's more education speak, Lord, help us. Because, you know, I, I think about the parents that are really busy, that are, or grandparents that are taking care of their children, their grandchildren, right? Like, the burden shouldn't be on them for them to figure out what all these words mean in practical terms. So are there any plans to do that?
Yes. In terms of capacity building and then also in our last goal of just getting input from various, you know, teacher groups, parent groups, we realize that we need much more training. And as I said, this year we put out a newsletter, but we just have to do so much more. We have to do webinars, we have to do meetings, face-to-face meetings, and we have to set up trainings that people who work can see them at their, when they come home. And so there's, we just have to use a multi-wide range of venues and mediums to, to, you know, get that message across. I, to conduct an ARD meeting successfully requires a lot of skill. And so, yes, we, we need to make our parents feel comfortable and comfortable enough to ask the questions that they want to ask.
Yeah. Absolutely. So one of the strategies we talked about is having a parent-to-parent support group because it's one thing for parents to listen to us talking to them, but having other parents support parents with their lived experience is so much more beneficial. So we'd like to start something like that here pretty soon for next year to make sure that parents feel the support from each other.
That's great. And then I'm, I'm presuming, but y'all can correct me if this is not accurate, y'all would be looking at, you know, community-based organizations, partnerships that have already existed, like Vella.
Yes.
Okay. And, oh, one, one last plug. I know we're told we shouldn't give suggestions, so this isn't a suggestion. It is. So I, microlearnings, right? So like something small. Because, you know, thankfully, like, man, I am so privileged. I get to work from home. I have three kids. I have my mom. I've got drama. You know, it's, I don't have time. And I have a child who's going through the evaluation process. And I know how to read, right? I know all the words. They're all in English. But when you're juggling so many things, you know, just bites, like, what do I need to know? You know, bite-sized pieces of information so it doesn't feel overwhelming, because that could be the unintended consequence, right? Of having too much information, too many newsletters, too many webinar. And then it's like, oh, my God, if I don't go to the webinar, will I not know? So just some food for thought. The other thing is I didn't see, and I think this kind of builds off of something I heard Trustee Anderson mention, like, the training for general ed teachers, but also to what extent might there be bite-sized information pieces for staff, for librarians, for, you know, folks who maybe don't interact with students in the classroom, but they interact with them in the hallways?
I think that's an excellent recommendation. We don't realize all of the different groups of people that are, that operate and work in a school system. And so we will, we will add that to our capacity building and to our family engagement and just hearing the voices of all stakeholders. We will add more strategies and ways to communicate that information to people.
Yeah. And the other thing that we know is it can't be a one and a done, right? It can't be just a one time. It's going to have to be ongoing and continual. And we do know that the focus on tier-one instruction is for all students. And so that will be built in the PLC process and our monthly meetings with our principals and through our instructional coaches as well.
And then a question about special education and dual lang, yeah, dual-language students. What kind of work is happening inter-departmentally and then between campuses? What does that look like?
We do offer, we are, we do have special education programs and services in, in, in Spanish, and, and so we will continue to support that as well. We are working with our teachers and our staff to improve their understanding of strategies, how to read the accommodations page and really understand what those accommodations are. And then we see our special education teachers as accommodation experts, so they, and this general education teacher will work with them to really see, this is my lesson for today, these, this is how I can adapt and accommodate my, my presentation to our student, to the students in the classroom.
Yeah. So whether they're dual-language or genit, it shouldn't matter because it's still about good core instruction and accommodations and modifications.
And that would be one area where, you know, continuing to receive updates, you know, just so that we know, hey, we tried this thing and it worked really great, or we tried this other thing and we thought it was going to work, it didn't quite work, and now we're tweaking it. Like, that's the kind of, you know, consistent updates. Because I would, if we were to hear in three months, you know, six months, like, oh, my gosh, we fixed it. I'd be like, uh-uh, no, uh-uh, I'm going to go talk to somebody. So, so, you know, but having those, those continual updates would be really helpful just to get a sense of where, where we're tracking. And I know, I know that would be helpful for parents to know as well, families. All right. And then the last thing, speaking of families, so I so appreciate, Dr. Stetson, you mentioning, you know, or taking the time to mention, you know, hey, parents and guardians, right? Like, I know you're hearing that we are, you know, perhaps we can use staff in more efficient ways, that it's not always more staff, more money, problem solved. And I completely agree, in, in general terms, not just with special education. And so, so my question is, like, how will that, how will, especially as y'all start to look at whether it's leveling or whatever it might, may be called, where you're looking at adjusting those ratios, what kinds of plans are in place to really communicate that with empathy to parents? Because the, the kind of immediate reaction is going to, it won't necessarily be one of faith, right? It'll, it may be quite the opposite. So what are the communication plans?
I would say that it's going to happen gradually because we're not going to go in right now and, you know, cut a certain amount of positions. But I think through attrition and as we get better in identifying the services and helping campuses make the decisions, because we do want to move towards an inclusive model instead of a pull-out model. And so as decisions are made, then there's going to have to be some adjustments to staffing.
Too, that I, I think parents love to be part of that seven questions as design, so on accommodations and modifications. So I think that the model that your district adopts, that's a systemic decision, they're a critical partner. And so providing them that training is just so robust with, and then the trust is there. And so providing them that training is just so robust with, and then the trust is there. If I'm part of the decision-making, then, then I trust it more.
Absolutely, yeah. Because I think, again, you know, sometimes when, because parents talk, and y'all know we do, you know, if somebody hears, like, oh, my God, did you hear that they're going to take away a teacher? And then it spreads like wildfire and people become scared and they don't feel included, right? Not to say, because I know we've meant, this has been mentioned in previous conversations, you know, nobody is suggesting that we poll parents and say, how many teachers should your campus have? But to really engage them in that process and, and helping them understand the rationale, you know, working better, not harder, right? Not throwing resources at an issue without really understanding how you're going to use those resources. And I really like that question, like, we need more staff and to do what? I'm all ears. So, so, yeah, I, I think really the trust starts, in my view, and I would hope that this is demonstrated at all the campuses and at HQ, that the trust should start with us trusting parents, us trusting teachers, us trusting students, that, you know, the more that we can communicate ahead of time, those fires are going to be far fewer, those like knee-jerk reactions where it's like, oh, my God, the department is a fire trashcan or whatever the phrase is. I lost my phrase. I've heard it before, though. But, yeah, the fewer those instances will occur, they'll never go away entirely, but I just really hope that, that we start building trust by trusting those whom we serve.
Thank you, Trustee Lou. Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Boswell.
I want to start by just saying thank you to all of you for, and everyone here and everyone you're connected with on campuses and the 41% of parents who responded to that survey. Dr. Stetson, I know you're surprised. I don't think people who live in this district are very surprised by that. We know that people step up because people care and people are eager to be heard. And I really want to thank, you know, students who've spoken up, the staff who's spoken up, we have a strong community of advocates who have been telling us a lot of these things for a long time. And so to have a lot of this reinforced, including the message that fixes that are good for students receiving special education, students are good for everybody. And we've heard that from our community of advocates and from the administration and now from you. And I think that's a powerful message, too. So just start with gratitude and thanks. It's, it's not an easy mirror to look in as a community, but it's a really important one. And I appreciate that you've also brought your gerouting, that, that if we do this right, we've got this and we can get where we need to be. So starting with real thanks from the administration, and it's not a question to answer right now, but I would love to have a good sense of, along with, you know, kind of a distilled vision statement, just a clear understanding as we head into budgeting of how the strategies are reflected, you know, kind of what's being prioritized and how those, those initial, it's a very long list of things that you've recommended and kind of where we're starting first and how that's reflected in our budget would be very helpful to have going forward. Along with, I think, a really concise, clear, distilled vision statement, because there's an immense amount in the slides and I hear that it's there. And I think the more clear we can make that. So you can communicate it, families, staff, everyone, and we can communicate it along with you. That would be wonderful to have. I really appreciate the focus on engaging families and, you know, kind of start to finish as collaborators and as a really powerful force for helping us get this right and supporting their students and trusting them to understand and have the capacity to be partners. So thank you for that. I love the parent-to-parent group. I think, as Trustee Lugo said, it's, we've seen an immense amount, you know, people who, who enter this world and the work it takes as a parent to get to a place of understanding. And I know we have an immensely generous community that pays that forward. So I really love that. I'm curious, I would love to know, kind of, the two-way communication and what you're doing to work with principals, with staff, in, you know, people in the classrooms, prayer professionals, teachers, kind of everyone and everyone we see in this room, to really take a look at all these strategies and evaluate what's working? Is, is what we think will work, working as we think it will? And what that process is looking like? Especially knowing that we've had a lot of voice flagging things for us in the past and kind of how that's being worked in as well. So we have that early warning system, whether things are working well or, you know, and that early reinforcement of, yes, we're on the right path.
I would say that as the strategic plan that the department is working on and they're getting feedback from parents, and we also need to get feedback from our team so that it does evolve over time and that we have some clear indicators of success that we're measuring over time, so that if something isn't working, then we need to pivot, right? And, because it's going to be a trial and error as we evolve and become better at what we do.
I would add, I think the piece that's working is the collaborative walks that we have, where you're going in and looking specifically for the implementation of the IEP. So you're able to see where, you know, we're actually, you know, providing and meeting the needs of our students. And again, school leadership is on those walks and so is the SPED team. And so those walks won't stop. And then continue to provide feedback to teachers as we walk into those classrooms about tier-one instruction and trying to make sure that that's strong for every student throughout the district.
Thank you for that. And baked into that process, is there an opportunity for teachers to say, this is working or this isn't, we need more support here? And for principals to do the same, kind of, here's what we're trying and, and here's what we think and how can we work together? Is that part of that process, that two-way back and forth?
Yes, so the coaching cycle goes both ways. And so it's a conversation, it's not a talking at, you know, it's a conversation about, like you said, what's working, what can we try? It's a dialogue. Again, it's not a one-way, you know, form of communication.
And the partnership with Dr. Stetson and her team is going to be ongoing. They have some research-based strategies. And in her report, she's very clear, we're going to have to identify some three high-leverage strategies that we want to provide instead of having, you know, a laundry list of things to do because otherwise, you know, we won't get better at anything when we're doing everything. So I think that as we evaluate the, the high-priority strategies that we move forward with and getting the feedback from teachers on what's working, what's not working, and we may need to pivot at that point, yeah.
Great, thank you all for that. And then I really would love to reinforce Trustee Lugo's request for updates, kind of getting us on a calendar for a regular cycle of updates. You know, that's part of how we got there and part of how we get out. So I really look forward to hearing the progress and seeing where we get. And thank you, Dr. Stetson, for sharing the Heckinger information and, and our target for really where we should, what we should be aiming for. So thank you for that. And then I have a question, one question for you, Dr. Stetson, other than kind of regular check-ins and really paying attention and doing what we're doing tonight, are there especially effective practices that you have seen from boards that you've worked with that we should be considering?
I was just thinking of one that I wish I hadn't mentioned to you all. In our work with the San Francisco Unified, one of the most powerful things I think we've ever done is that we asked the board if they would be willing to endorse guiding principles. And it was a very clear, it wasn't a bunch of blah, 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 it was very clear set of guiding principles and maybe eight of them or so. And they were adopted by the board, put on their website, and it made such a difference because in our continued work in that district, when we go out in the schools or talk with parents, they'd say, well, as the board adopted the, and, you know, and it was, it's, they weren't like specific nitty-gritty little strategies, but they were, for example, that every child is a general education student and, and so on. And then, you know, and then the supports for them need to be, must be individually determined and not on the basis of a label or a place. Those are just two. That was really one of the most effective things that I've seen happen, that really jump-started and then maintained the change over time.
I would add, if you noticed, Dr. Gill, when she was going through the five, you know, priorities for the district, that she was mentioning our value statements that our board has adopted. So that's a great starting point, that if we need to revisit those and maybe add or tweak them, but it's already there. And that's why she connected them. We wanted to make sure that we connected it to value statements because that shows the board's commitment to all students.
I appreciate that, Dr. Gill and Ms. Casas and Dr. Stetson, that idea. And I would say to President Rodriguez and my colleagues, I would love to consider that the value statements that are very specifically focused in this area in collaboration with the work that you're doing, would love to have that conversation as a board. So thank you for that. And then just one final question is, how is input from students being sought and used about their experience, especially our older students who I know have a lot to say and have a deep body of knowledge?
I think that is, that is an area of growth for us and we will need to include it in our vision of where we want to be because we do, we, they do have some excellent ideas. And we, in, at the secondary level, you, you see our students participate in their ARD meetings. And they are very, very wise students and very honest about what they need.
Great, thank you, Dr. Gill, and thank you, everybody. That's it from me.
Thank you, Trustee Boswell. Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Singh.
Thank you so much to everyone who worked on this. I have to say, I feel really hopeful. I feel probably the most hopeful I have felt about special education in our district in the three years I've been on the board. And, and I attribute that to, to Dr. Stetson and the whole team working on this. So thank you very much. I think I heard, a lot of what I heard from my colleagues really resonated. And just the fact of having all these staff people here today so that everyone's on the same page, I think is so critical. Thank you for doing that. Sorry y'all had to stay here late. Hopefully it'll be worth your while. And it's interesting because we have people that are brand-new here and we have people who have been here for like 10 or 15 years. And I think all of the staff have really valuable things to offer. The staff that have been here for a long time, they have the relationships in the schools that we can actually utilize and leverage to help build the trust that Dr. Stetson was talking about, to help raise the morale. And, you know, and we have, under Dr. Elizalde's leadership, a vision that I hope is distilled and published so that we all know exactly, like, we should all be able to recite the vision for special education. I'm not sure I could do that right now, but I really hope that, that one day one is developed so that we can all say it and, and agree upon it. And I would say, you know, Trustee Lugo was talking about having periodic check-ins, which I really like because it holds all of us accountable. It helps ensure that we are putting resources in where they need to go. Like, one of the biggest things we do is we adopt a huge budget, which we're going to do next month. But that budget is intended to support implementation, right? And so that alignment, you know, between the budget, the implementation, in a couple weeks, we're approving a strategic plan for the district. And while you were presenting, I went back and pulled it up and I was like, okay, are, you know, does the strategic plan talk about special education and to what extent? And a lot of, I was happy to see a lot of the things that you mentioned were in there, but a lot of things you mentioned were also not in there. So I'm wondering if the, you know, for us, for me as a trustee, to effectively understand if we are, you know, to, to look at these different checkpoints in time, I would need to know like what your plan is, you know, so we can have something to judge against. So are you guys going to do like a really detailed kind of strategic plan just for special education?
Yes.
Yay, okay. I should have just asked that question rather than my whole speech. But, so when, like, is that something that we would get to see and is that something that we could, like?
Sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Yeah, is that something that, like, what is your timeline on this? Because we just got this report. I know you've got a lot of stuff going on, but...
So they're working on the draft right now?
We have a draft.
And they're presenting it to the two parent groups this month and then...
And to our two department groups, our district leadership and our department chairs at the campus level. So there's a lot of different people to still approach, like our administration, teachers at large. But I'm just very grateful to have the report, the Stetson study, done during my time period here because it has shaped what we have in draft already.
Oh, good, good.
But we definitely need to have like a version by July. So we're launching the new year, all of the welcome-back training for principals and teachers, that it's all aligned to where we're going.
Okay, good. And then how confident do you feel like that plan, which is in development, can be supported by the budget that's being proposed to us?
I'm very confident.
I'm 100% confident.
There's only one right answer to that.
I think that when we talk about like tier-one instruction, like, that is the biggest place that we need to start. And when we talk about tier-one instruction, that's everybody. And really building in the scaffolds for how do you make the learning accessible? Because that research study, 90% of our students who receive special education should be performing on grade level. And when we look at our data, that's not what we're getting. And that's about core instruction.
Yeah.
So we don't need additional money or resources for that because that's going to be what we're doing for every student as a starting point. As we think about the models for how we're serving students and if there's need for staffing, but we know that currently we're, I don't want to say overstaffed because then we're going to get in trouble, but I think as we shift the resources that we have, that we can certainly accomplish what we need to.
Okay, that's great, that's great. And I also wanted to know, so in, in your plan that you're doing, are you going to have like implementation targets? So for example, like, Dr. Mays, we talk a lot about, you know, like, training, like, we're going to offer professional development in inclusive practices. Okay, so do you guys set targets? Like, do we want to make sure like 5% of our teachers get that training or 50% or like 80%? Like, how do you know that you have been successful in implementing this? I'm not sure who the best person is.
I would say that we've got to think about 100%, right? Because 5%, 80% is not enough, but 100%. And as we're working with school leadership and designing our observation protocols, that everybody's clear about what we're looking for upfront, so we're looking for evidence of implementation of what we put in the strategic plan. Because if we do keep it narrow to three things that we're looking for, for tier-one instruction, then we should be able to look for evidence, provide training, provide support for implementation, and then look for evidence and then create that cycle of learning that we're all working together towards.
If I could add, we are really lucky now because in the old days, it was the sit-and-get only, even though there's a place for that. Think of all the resources that we have, that every teacher and principal could have acts and librarians and everyone. From online materials that are brief, but give the, for example, the board adopted guiding principles could be one of those pieces. But you could, as you take maybe just three of those strategies at a time, in two or three years, you can pick another three and another two or three. But as you bring in new teachers, you're going to have a library of training materials and resources that they have, all have instant access to. So it's almost a cumulative effect that we have the technology now to, to, to really hone in and give teachers like videos of how it's done and with real kids and so on. I'm sorry, I was just hopping into this, but I do think that we are in a different place now in, in the, the range and the quality and the depth that we can offer our teachers and principals through professional development. It's not just sit and get.
I like that, thank you. And I, I'm wondering if, so I used to serve on the CAC of my kiddo school and we used to look at the campus improvement plan. So is this, like, if you were to have three strategies, would those also show up in, like, campus improvement plans? Or is that just something that would be, like, centralized?
So they could, those strategies, if a principal or a campus elected to have the same focus, it could show up there. And Ms. Stevens is back there, but I think for us, we have to recognize it's not just our office and Ms. Casas' office, but also professional learning. And so, you know, our instructional playbook also focuses on these strategies. For us, as we talk about onboarding teachers and bringing in, you know, supporting teachers that are here already, trying to make sure that we have a narrow focus in terms of instructional strategies and differentiation. I know that's been an ongoing conversation in Ms. Stevens' office, so we're not going, you know, very broad, but going really narrow and trying to go deep so that we can, like we said, we can do really well with those strategies. And that's a focus for all three groups.
Yeah, and I think if we do this really well, there should be a cascading effect, right? If the district has made this a priority, then we should see evidence of it at the campus level in the campus improvement plan. And then as Dr. Stetson said, we need to look at our teacher evaluation system and our principal evaluation system to really be specific about where, where in those two evaluation systems it lives so that we are really... be specific about where in those two evaluation systems it lives, so that we are really being accountable for what we say we're doing.
I appreciate that. I also was interested to know about the process and the vehicle used to determine student needs and staffing. You're going to have to answer that now, because I know that's like a huge category. But we all know that special education is the area where we've had the most resignations this school year, I think, right? Or like, a huge, right? Okay. So, and I just searched on the website, we have like 195 job openings in special education at this moment. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. So, like...
For next year.
Yes, for next year.
Yeah.
So, like, these are all, obviously, like, you know, how do you fulfill an IEP if you don't have, you know, so I'm going to really be excited to see how we fill those positions over the summer. Y'all come work for AISD. It's a great district. And...
Can I add? So, on page 35 of the report, there is a specific on number nine, the exit interviews that were looked at for teachers that have resigned. And the number-one reason that teachers leave is for lack of support from principals. So, we know that, starting with our principals really getting trained, and knowing what support looks like, that that could be a huge lever for keeping teachers in the district.
Okay. And regarding the survey, so, this is a question for you, Dr. Stetson, and I just love how you present, by the way. Like, you're so good. Right? Isn't she awesome? Yes. I got such good vibes from you the whole time. Like, you were giving us some tough love, and we didn't even realize it. Yes. But I had some questions about, so, like, one of the things that we always talk about in the district is, like, we've got this equity decision-making toolkit that was developed by Dr. Holly, who's sitting right behind you, and her staff. And one of the key things in there is, you know, ensuring that, like, the marginalized populations are included. So, I was curious to know if you were able to include some of the voices that we don't always hear, like, in the survey, and if you could just tell me a little bit about that.
Yes. There were thousands of comments. There were open-ended questions. So, there were thousands of comments, which we've provided to the district. That's part of your package. And you can disaggregate, or you can literally categorize a number of those comments that related to race, and disproportionate identification of children with disabilities, of children of color. And so, one of the things that I think is a theme, that I would put under tier-one, is culturally responsive instructional strategies. That is huge. I know that I have my, like, nine or 10 that I would say are the critical tier-one strategies. And that's got to be really one of the very first. And I so agree, it can only be a few at a time, because you have to add those over time. But when you look at your community and the priorities, I believe that that would have to be one of the top three, or four, of those strategies, is culturally responsive instruction.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for me.
Thank you, trustees. Other questions? Trustee Sapata? And Trustee Lou?
May I just thank all of you? I do this a lot. And one of the things I want to thank you for is that you work pretty hard on these evaluations. It's a killer to write. And very often, you turn it in, and you have such high hopes, and it goes on a shelf. And so, after meeting with the superintendent and her cabinet, and then the opportunity to present to you all tonight, and to see the folks behind me, I've had a really great night. And this is an example of when a district really was serious about the queries, about the services, and you really are serious about the things that you want to do about it. And so, I have many disappointing drives home, and this won't be one of those. So, I thank you.
Well, I too want to thank all of you for this very hard work. I remember when Dr. Elise Salde had told us that we were redoing special ed, and we were all, like, wanting to jump up and down, because we knew there needed a lot of work to be done. And you all have been going above and beyond to look at every area. So, I really appreciate that. And Dr. Stetson, I don't know if you know, but I'm an alumni from Travis High School, and I graduated being visually impaired, and not one teacher knew, or found out, or challenged me in 12 years to see if I could read or do anything. So, you know, I always think about students who have not been assessed.
Yes.
You know, who are quiet, and they're not being asked or invited to participate. So, in the priorities, the top three priorities that you mentioned, Ms. Guss's, I think it would be good to have a timeline on assessments, because that's something that still, parents are saying, my child's still waiting to be assessed. So, and we cannot really do anything, right, until we assess them. So, I think that would be helpful to get, and see if that's something that's, what your thoughts are.
Yes.
Well, evaluations are a bedrock promise. It's a civil right. It's the serious stuff. And I believe that, from what I've observed, the department's really making that a priority. But I do think, I was amazed, when you look at the lack of competitive salaries, and the difficulty employing people who can do the assessment and the appraisal, there are a lot of system issues that represented barriers to getting that accomplished. But I love what you just said. Without, you have to have the assessment, the referral and the assessment, in order for anything to start. And so, that makes, it's perfect, what you just said. It makes it such a priority, not only the civil right, but it's just a right of access and opportunity. So, thank you for saying it that way.
Okay. Thank you. And also, I think I should note, this apparent educator, is that a new position, or is that a changed name from a TA to a parent educator? What is a parent educator?
Parent educator.
Parent educator.
Teacher assistant.
Oh, it's a teacher assistant. So, you changed the name to parent educator. Okay.
For the record, that was Dr. Elise Salde.
Para educator. Okay, great. No, and I just want to shout out to all the special ed and TAs that work with our students, because they have to have a heart of gold to be able to do this work. It's very difficult work, but I have talked to many, and they love their job. So, thank you for all that you do. And I think, no, I think I've said it all. Everybody else already said a lot of great input as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Sapata. Trustee Lou?
All right. Just a couple of quick things. So, again, Dr. Stetson, thank you for lifting up the importance of having culturally relevant instruction. I just appreciate that so much. I was looking through, on a Saturday afternoon, no, I was looking through some old board documents from 2019. I know, right? Like, I've got nothing better to do. What am I doing with my life? So, in November of 2019, the board at that time, as y'all who were already here know, what was it, voted for culturally proficient inclusion to be mandated. And so, I think that's another piece where, like Dr. Mays took from Dr. Hicks, you know, hand-holding, right? Like, making sure that there's hand-holding between the different departments, and breaking down those silos, and really making sure that, you know, we don't have to be perfect. We don't have to get it immediately right, straight out the gate. But, you know, being purposeful, working together. And I think I would really love to hear, or maybe I should say, I look forward to hearing how CPI, those staff, those folks, and of course, Office of Equity, how they're included in this work. Because if we can, the collective, y'all, if we can build the systems to outlive all of us, like, that's the impactful work. Nobody has to remember our name, but it's the operationalizing of these systems that can ensure that no one else has to experience what Trustee Sapata went through, or what Trustee Anderson has observed through her own lived experience, going, you know, interacting with AISD, and hearing from other parents. So, I put that forth. And then, relatedly, because I'm an implementation science nerd, I just want to echo Trustee Singh's comment about implementation markers. I mean, it's not sexy work, us implementation science nerds, it's not sexy. Nobody wants to hear about it. But it's incredibly important, especially when you're doing any kind of organizational transformation. So, it's not just change management or transition management. It's really looking at, what do we want to measure? How do we know we're getting it right? And doing incremental. So, yes, right, like, have those stretch goals of, we want 100% of our teachers and staff to get the training. That's beautiful. And breaking it down into achievable targets, right? And I think also communicating that, you know, during the future updates, so that, you know, no one is blindsided when a parent says, oh, my gosh, at my campus, only two teachers are trained. And it's like, okay, you know, let's, and then, let's look at the big picture, and let's see where things are at. I think that would be really helpful to have those markers. Okay, now that's it.
Going once. Trustees, other questions? I have just two comments and two quick questions. I think one comment is, one, we will go back to the Governance Committee and figure out how we get updates on the five areas that I think that, Dr. Stetson, you presented. If there's a way to do it, either in person or in writing, whatever that does, we'll work with the administration, Dr. Salde, and Dr. Mays to do that. I think the second one, Dr. Stetson, thank you for the idea about the guiding principles. As my colleagues gave all these different questions, I already came up with nine of them, which I won't list them out. But I think there's probably three that I just want to highlight, I think because of the whole team that's here. I think one that I heard was, that we have a tremendous belief that every individual is a human being endowed with dignity. And that is so important to all of this. I think on the other, one of the other ones, I think, is, I've had a little bit of experience with parents and students, of young adults with developmental cognitive disabilities, is that when you meet one young adult, or one student with developmental cognitive disabilities, you have met one student with cognitive disabilities. And so, I think that's an important principle. I think the other one is probably one that Trustee Lugo commented on, that we believe that we ought to be communicating effectively across different cultures, so that those individuals are there. And there are so many others that I could talk about. And actually, I'll just mention one, because I know that I'd probably be leaning over to Dr. Elise Salde right now, and telling her, this report is a good indication of one of the conversations we had at the very beginning, that we have a district of schools, not a school district. And when we start thinking about things from a school district, a systemic approach, it won't matter what, who was up here, what name we had, but we just know that we have a system that's going to ensure that's student-centered, and it's going to make sure that every single child succeeds to their fullest potential. So, I really appreciate, and I know that this is not the beginning of the work. This has been continuing on, because I know you all have done it as well. So, those are the two comments. The two quick questions I had was, one, I was going to ask you what resources you need, but you've already answered that question like three times from us, so I won't ask you that one. But I think one of the other things, I think in a conversation I had with Trustee Lugo one day, was, you know, this question of, like, well, what supports do you need? Because I think that's an important question, because a lot of times, it's not about the money, it's about what is it that we can do to be supportive of what you're trying to accomplish.
I think that I would say that we're on the right track. Having those value statements that we're all saying, and that we're all speaking, is going to be really important, that you hold us accountable, right? That we set some measurable targets, and you hold us accountable for moving in the right direction. And that shows that the parents, it'll build trust with the parents to see that we're all saying the same things. We all have the same aspirations for all of our students, especially for students with disability.
Yeah, I would say, you know, time and belief and best practices. You heard Dr. Stetson talk about, you know, tier-one instruction. You heard her talk about POCs and planning time. You heard her talk about effective monitoring. And so, we've put forth a lot of effort around coaching cycles and growing capacity. That was another big component. And so, I would say, you know, the resource of time and trust will be valued by the administrative team, because that's what it's going to take. But I think that you've heard a consistent thread in terms of what she shared, and some of the pieces that we presented before you all, as a part of, you know, many other reports that we've shared. So, I think that those two, time and trust, would be something that would be valued.
Yeah. And Dr. Stetson talked about the planning time. And so, this next year, where elementary teachers are going to have that extra planning time, is going to be critical, that we use that time effectively, and do those micro-learning throughout the year, to make sure that teachers are building their toolkit, you know, throughout the year.
Thank you. And, you know, Dr. Mays just reminded me of another guiding principle, which would be a focus on research-based interventions. So, we could keep talking tonight, and we'll be done with the guiding principles. The last question I have is really, you know, just, I really appreciate all, I mean, I agree with all my colleagues. Thank you so much for all the work. You know, on a personal level, I've been involved with a business approach to serving young adults with developmental cognitive disabilities. And one of the questions I had was, I was curious about how 18-plus is a part of this, or how the idea of gen-ed plus that, but they're outside of the normal school. I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about how you're approaching 18-plus.
Right. We have a transition coordinator that is working on that project. I'm very happy with some of the connections that Austin has developed over time. And we do realize that we need to look at, how do we coach our students? What kind of opportunities do we prepare them for in terms of employment? And so, we are improving in that area. We're working, we have a framework right now, and it will only get better in the future.
Thank you. I haven't thought of a guiding principle for that one yet. So, trustees, unless you have any other questions, I'm looking at Trustee Lou. Thank you all very much for all this hard work, and to the team that's behind you, and those that couldn't make it with us today. Thank you all very much for your commitment to our students. Appreciate it. Thank you. Trustees, next on our agenda is a discussion on a potential application for Project Gateway for an appraised value limitation on qualified property. Dr. Mays?
All right. Thank you. Last week, the district was approached by Crowell of Austin on a potential appraised value limitation agreement, commonly referred to as a 313 agreement. Tonight, an opportunity for the board and the public to gather information on this proposal and the process. There is no vote tonight. If the board would like to consider the agreement, the administration will be ready to support by reviewing and submitting an application to the state at the end of this month. This application would not lock the district into any future action. However, we anticipate we would have further discussions with the prospective business, community, and the board. In early fall, the district will consider approving an agreement with the business that set up direct benefits for our students and district. Tonight, we are joined by Michael Latour and Tony Shum from Crowell. We also have David Thompson from Thompson and Horden, representing the district and board as legal counsel on this project. We are fortunate to have Mr. Thompson's expertise and advice at no cost to the district. David Thompson is the foremost expert on education law and school finance in the state, and has supported multiple districts of all sizes with these types of arrangements. Before we hear the presentation from Crowell, we would like to ask Mr. Thompson if he could provide an overview of the law for these agreements. And thank you again for your free services.
Thank you very much.
If you push it to green.
Do I have it close enough?
Do I have it close enough to me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we just hold one second? We don't have a quorum for the first time.
Well, okay.
So let me go get one of my colleagues. Sorry, one of our staff. Thank you for that point of order. One, two, three, four, five. So, Mr. Thompson, we now have a quorum, so ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's good to be with you this evening. As has been said, I would like to just emphasize, on behalf of myself, Thompson and Horton Law Firm, we're advising the district. We are not counsel for Crowell or their client. With me tonight is also Mr. Chris Grammer with Colwell Consulting, who serves as a technical expert with us in these matters. And we do appreciate the opportunity to assist the board as you consider this and as your administration works through whether to make a recommendation to the board. Our purpose tonight, as been said, is simply to provide additional information publicly to the board and also to the Austin community. And we're pleased to have an opportunity to bring that information to you. Just very briefly, what is under consideration is an economic development proposal under Chapter 313 of the Texas Tax Code. Chapter 313 applies specifically to school districts. It's the companion chapter to Chapter 312, which authorizes abatements, for example, by cities and counties. Chapter 313 is an economic development tool and a very important part of the state's overall economic development framework and applies specifically to school districts. What this chapter authorizes, does not require, but authorizes, school districts in certain circumstances as defined by statute to approve, I'm going to call them super abatements, agreements with industry developments that will benefit the state. And there are some potential benefits to the district financially, but more important, some potential benefits to your student, for students for considering such a proposal. With regard to Chapter 313, I'll read you just a couple of brief statements in the statute that go to the purpose of the act. The purpose of Chapter 313 is to encourage large-scale capital investment in Texas to create new, high-paying jobs in Texas. Three, to attract to this state large-scale businesses that are exploring opportunities to locate in other states or even other countries. And fourth, to enable state and local government officials, including school districts such as Austin I S D, to consider and ultimately approve or authorize economic development incentives comparable to incentives being offered in other states or even in other countries. So again, it's part of the economic framework, economic development framework of the state. And it is a matter that is under consideration in a number of districts around Texas as we speak. Chapter 313 was originally enacted by the legislature in 2001. First went into effect in January of 2002, so it's been in effect for 20 and a half years. It was up for sunset reauthorization or consideration during the 2021 legislative session, and it was not reauthorized. So as we sit here this evening, Chapter 313 does expire December 31st of this year. Whether a similar statute or this statute might be reauthorized in future legislatures is just conjecture. So we're simply looking at the law as we know it and as it exists today. Because this statute is due to expire, there are a number of proposals being made around the state. In fact, I think, Chris, you said Lockhart approved an application last night here in your area. And the comptroller, under Chapter 313, any agreements that a school district may choose to authorize also have to be submitted to and approved by the comptroller in the state of Texas. And that's the state's oversight on these projects. The comptroller has set a deadline of June 1st for applications to be filed. And I do want to make an observation, Mr. President, that what's under consideration before June 1st is simply whether to make an application. It's not a legal commitment to actually execute an agreement. There will still be time after the application to negotiate and decide if an agreement is in the interest of the school district and your students and your taxpayers. Neither the school district nor the company would be bound by an agreement, would be bound legally to move forward beyond this submission of the application. The actual negotiation of the agreement would then be a subsequent step. But without submitting an application by the June 1st deadline, there's no opportunity to even consider the matter. And so that's the time sensitivity of it. Under Chapter 13, school districts are limited. There are some statutory guidelines or frameworks or limits on the types of projects that can be considered. They have to be of a certain size. They have to generate, again, high-paying jobs. There are metrics to look at in that regard. And so that is the purpose, is to focus it on large-scale developments that will actually generate jobs and economic development helpful to communities. As we've said, school districts do have an opportunity, if an application is submitted, as part of negotiating the final agreement, to seek some considerations that would be exempt from recapture financially, but also some considerations in terms of internships and other matters, which might be highly advantageous to your students. But all that's before you tonight is simply to receive more information. Crowell is here to present information about your specific proposal in public this evening. We're all here to answer any questions and provide any information that the board may need as you think about this. And again, ultimately, it will be your administration's prerogative to make a recommendation to the board and the board's opportunity to then consider and vote on that matter. Chris, in terms of just here in this general area, do you want to give just a flavor of how many projects either have been granted or are pending here in the central Texas area?
Sure. And Chris Grammer with Colwell Consulting. Good to see everybody again this evening. In terms of the 313 program, as David mentioned, the program was initiated in 2001. Since then, there are roughly about 700, just over 700, active applications that have been filed with school districts across the state, more immediate to this area, within the Region 13 service area. 14 school districts have entered into or entering into Chapter 313 applications. As David mentioned, the deadline and the program not being reauthorized has created a little bit of a rush for projects to come in. And I'm sure you've seen headlines within projects of Hutto I S D, Taylor I S D, Del Valley, Lockhart I S D. And then some, there's been some smaller renewable solar energy projects and kind of some outlined school districts. But some big-name projects that have come and engaged school districts here in the greater Austin area.
Mr. President, we can provide more information or answer any questions that the board may have specifically, kind of as an overview of how Chapter 313 works. But unless the board has specific questions, we would turn the presentation over to the Crowell representatives to actually get to the specific proposal that they would like to present to the Austin I S D board for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Trustees, do you have any questions for our counsel on this issue? If not, we can move to the other presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rodriguez and Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity tonight to present this opportunity for the community and the Austin School District. As a citizen and a father of a child in the school district, I think you'll find this project will be very exciting for our community. And I'd like to start off by introducing who our prospective applicant is for this project. NXP is a global semiconductor company and a longstanding supplier in the industry with over 50 years of innovation and operating history. NXP designs purpose-built, rigorously-tested technologies that enable devices to sense, think, and connect, and act intelligent to improve people's daily lives. NXP already has two existing facilities, manufacturing facilities in Austin, one of which is located off the Ed Bluestein 183 Highway and the other in Oak Hill. Both facilities are key strategic manufacturing assets to the U.S. and primarily dedicated to the semiconductors for the automotive industry. When you look at the products, there's really four key industries that they touch on. Automotive, mobile or cellular, industrial, I O T or Internet of Things, and communication infrastructure. NXP has been around a long time. You probably know them as Motorola, previously Freescale back in 2015. They meshed and merged with Philips to create NXP. And some of the key highlights of their history, Motorola, the first words sent back from moon to earth was "done so on relayed on a Motorola transmitter." So some really great technologies that have been developed over the years and really a key contributor to the economy here. Tony, would you like to take us through our E S G goals?
Absolutely. My name is Tony Shum, Director of Site Selection and Incentives for Crowell. And this is a company that has serious commitments to environmental and social governance. I think one of the things that drives innovation at this company is the diverse group of people that go to work for this company every day. And they've got some major priorities in making sure that they have underrepresented groups represented throughout their workforce, whether it's R and D or manufacturing, or the people that come to work and run the corporate office. They bring different perspectives, different ideas, and different backgrounds to the company that is deftly committed to reducing the footprint, not only through their products, but through their own practices. So one of the things that they want to do is achieve carbon neutrality by 2035. And in order to do that, they have got a goal, a midway goal of 35% reduction by 2027. So this company takes very seriously its commitment to reducing wastewater consumption, reducing power consumption, and recyclability of their own products within their own facilities, and not just what they touch within these industries that Mike articulated, but within their own operations. So they make your car drive more intelligently and avoid crashes. They make your, they reduce consumption of fuel. They make products that are enabling communication between cars to save lives. So not only do they do that, but they have social commitments that expand throughout the globe. So they are definitely focused on communities and their backyard here in Austin, but they also have commitment to things like no trafficking or forced labor or human rights abuses across the world. Reduction of workplace injuries to zero is their goal. And when it comes to governance for the environmental footprint, they have a very serious focus on pushing throughout their management chain accountability and responsibility. So these commitments are all open to the public and on their website. So if anybody wants to look, they're all openly advertised.
And NXP was ranked in 2021 the best place to work by Comparably. And that was, or given them, really based on leadership diversity for their company and their involvement here in the community. And so, moving on, the next talking quarter discussion focuses specifically on semiconductors and how critical they are to the economy as well as national security to the United States. Semiconductors enable almost every single industrial, commercial, military, smartphone, aircraft, internet, electric grid. If you look at a vehicle, there's over 1,000 semiconductor chips just in one vehicle. As we've all experienced, the automotive industry has recently come into some issues regarding supply and, as a result, caused issues and impacts to cost of affordability of automotive parts. And a lot of it had to do with the lack of supply due to semiconductor industry. And so when we're looking at investment opportunities in the U.S. specifically, there's new legislation that's attempting to revitalize the semiconductor industry. And it's referred to as the CHIPS Act. It's a bipartisan legislative revitalization program used to provide grant money for research of semiconductors to decrease those supply chain risks and really reduce dependency on foreign countries such as China and other industries that are really producing the majority of the semiconductor chips worldwide. And so, you know, from an investment perspective, there's an immediate need for capacity. And as a result, we want to present an opportunity, at least, for NXP to source some of that investment domestically. And we'll get into some of the requirements of the CHIPS Act here in a few slides. But we do want to touch on what specifically this project entails from a job creation and a capital investment perspective. We'll go into the details of that and we'll follow it up with some of their three pillars of community impact as well as a local organization and company.
And one more contextual point, specific to Austinites, the used vehicle industry in Austin is up 32% year-over-year as of last month. And that translates to an $8,400 increase in the price of a used car, average price of a used car for an Austinite, because of that chip shortage.
So what we're here tonight to present is a project that would entail specific capital investment at one of and/or their two local facilities here in Austin. The estimated investment for the facility, we're currently expecting or anticipating a $2.6 billion investment here locally. This project would create roughly 750 to 800 net new jobs. These are high-paying jobs, but also array of different industry and expertise types. But the average salary expectations would be greater than $100,000. Existing in Austin, non-inclusive of contractor jobs, NXP currently employs roughly 1,300 employees in the Austin market. Looking at the proposed timeline, the final investment decision is estimated to be in Q4 of 2022 of this year, with construction commencement beginning in 2024 and estimated operations commencement in 2026. NXP is looking at alternative sites globally, considering some of the surveys and data that we've received as well as what they've analyzed. And I'm going to read you a stat according to the government incentives in U.S. competitiveness in semiconductor manufacturing done by Boston Consulting Group. A U.S. fab cost of ownership is approximately 30% higher than in Taiwan, South Korea, or Singapore, and 30% to 50% higher than in China, as much as 40% to 70% of that cost differential is directly attributable to governmental incentives. So those countries are incentivizing these companies to do their investments and create their products in their countries. And that's really what we're up against here domestically from a semiconductor perspective. And so this currently, our job as their advisors is to analyze these different site locations for, you know, synergies and effectiveness for their company. And so that's part of our review and analysis right now. Would you like to add anything as we get into the CHIPS?
Yeah, I think one of the important points to stress is should this project come to Austin? While the 750 to 800 direct new jobs with healthcare and full benefits are wonderful, there's also ancillary benefits during a construction phase and tertiary job creation in the community that has a multiplier effect that is far above other industries. So one of the highest multiplier effects you can get is in high-level manufacturing, so value-add manufacturing, airplanes, cars, semiconductor chips. That starts to get into a four-to-five-to-six-to-one multiplier. So for every one job, NXP would That, that starts to get into a four to five to six to one multiplier. So for every one job NXP would create, there would be X number of other jobs created in this, in the community across a wide spectrum of educational attainment, as far as who could step into that role, and wages according to what those, those jobs would pay as they feed into the ecosystem that would be created by these manufacturing jobs.
So with that, a lot of the reason this discussion has been spurred is really back to the CHIPS Act, which is a federal program, as we mentioned, and would provide grants and dollars for this industry specifically to provide them the earmarking of semiconductor investment within the U.S. And one of the major requirements of this federal program is that you have local incentive support, and it's a match. And so without local support, the CHIPS Act does not provide any grant funding for the company. And so the CHIPS Act is $50 billion grant funding in the U.S. in semiconductor to offset the cost of construction, expansion, and retooling of semiconductor-related facilities. Specifically, $2 billion of that is earmarked for the automotive industry. NXP is a world leader in automotive semiconductors, and they are a critical supplier to the industry and market. So we are asking here tonight for support from the local community for this project specifically, and we will talk about some of the benefits that a Chapter 313 limitation agreement would provide to Austin Independent School District. So some of the potential benefits to AISD would be a revenue loss payment. What that is, is the company would reimburse effectively the school district for any revenue loss payments in year one of the value limitation period of the program. That is estimated to be roughly $18.5 million in direct revenue to the school district outside of any of the recapture program impacts. Additionally, the company would estimated, estimatedly have an, a total of $48.7 million of supplemental payments back to Austin Independent School District, also outside of the recapture for the Austin Independent School District. The, the company would have, the school district would receive full taxable value after the Chapter 313 agreement expires for the life of the real and personal property. This project would provide increased community wages and job opportunities specifically to AISD families as these projects are both located within the AISD school districts as well as both located in state-designated enterprise zone areas. And lastly, the approval of this Chapter 313 agreement would reduce the impacts of the state recapture, which is a significant impact or issue for AISD. So, you know, looking at this program, if this project were to come to this community without the support of a Chapter 313, which I'm here to say would not occur because there would be no funding for the project without the CHIPS Act, it would have negative effects on AISD funding, effectively increasing the amount of recapture paid back to the state because of the increased value that this project would bring to the tax roll. And so we'll move on with, with that slide and kind of get into the fun stuff now. This is the NXP's community focus. And this is something we're excited to share with you tonight. STEM is one of the three key pillars for NXP's community focus. NXP is a corporate sponsor of Code to College. Code to College mission and vision is to dramatically increase the number of minority and low-income high school students who enter into Excel and STEM undergrad majors and careers. Code to Challenge is a multi-year career prep and college access program that leverages volunteer technical talent to teach coding and web development skills to traditionally underrepresented students in order to support them through college and into STEM careers promoting digital inclusion. And this is one of NXP's major annual contributions annually. The company provides contributions in excess of $125,000 in local support through certain specific programs, one of which is an annual STEM summer camp. Additionally, some of the other community engagements that they have been involved in, as you'll see on this chart here, there's several. I don't necessarily need to go through all of them. I'm sure you're all very familiar with many of the different programs here. But I think specifically, there's a few that I would like to highlight for, for this purposes. And I think one is, the Latininas is a mission to empower all girls to innovate through media and technology. I think that's an important one for NXP. Houston Tilson's Austin Prep, it's a summer program for middle school and high school students with interest in science, math, engineering, and technology. Out Youth, which offers youth of all sexual orientation and gender identities, a place where they are loved, acknowledged, and accepted for exactly who they are. The Refuge, which is a long-term live-in rehabilitation facility for child survivors of sex trafficking. And I think lastly, directly, NXP last year donated 850 gifts for the students of Rodriguez Elementary School in Barbara Jordan Early College Prep. And so those are some of the annual contributions that NXP has contributed to the community. They have a proud history of advocacy and, and community relationships and have won several awards through community impact grants and, and has been a pillar of the community for here for, for many decades.
And one thing I could also mention this evening is if the board sees fit to send this application to the comptroller for consideration, one of the first things that would happen is a letter of completeness is issued to the company saying that the application is complete, and it triggers the 90-day review period, the statutory 90-day review period with the comptroller. And during that time period, we could work beginning at that, at that particular point in time when we have the start date identified, doing two things. We could start to explore discussions around what the company could do with AISD as far as STEM partnerships, or internships, or externships, or apprenticeships could look like under the, the idea of moving forward with these two projects, or one of these two projects in the city of Austin and AISD's district. And we could conceivably start working on the terms of an agreement. So with that compressed timeline that my colleagues had mentioned, there's obviously a lot of work to be able to accomplish before the 12/31/22 deadline. But those are two things that we could start working on immediately as additional benefits to AISD.
And I will say they not only want to, they're excited to work with AISD on these different customized programs for the community. And so we look forward to engaging with AISD on some of these opportunities for community engagement. One of their other pillars we look at is university and workforce development partnerships. So you'll see here, they partner really with, with all regional universities and workforces developments, Austin Community College, University of Texas, my favorite, Texas State University, Southwest, formerly Southwest Texas, and many other regional partners on, on specific research and collaboration for their industry and for their education systems. So as a summary or a highlight for considerations, we're looking at an extremely exciting project from my perspective. Hopefully, you feel the same way, 700 to 800 full-time positions, an investment in one or the other campuses here locally. NXP has significant other indirect and induced impacts on their community with supplier of vendor work. There's tremendous amount of third-party tier, second-tier companies that provide support for these operations. And we look forward to commitments from NXP and, and working forward for Texans and kind of diverse the underrepresented communities in which they operate. And so lastly, given the importance of offsetting some of the high capital initial expenditures, obviously, the requirements of the, the grants from the federal bipartisan CHIPS Act, we ask for your consideration and approval on a submittal of a Chapter 313 application at, at the next meeting. And, and we, we work forward, work towards, you know, working together as a partnership with the school district and community on a go-forward basis. And we thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. And we're certainly open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Now that you've heard the proposal, if I can add just a few quick comments about how Chapter 313 agreement, limitation agreements interact with the school funding formulas, because I know that's always an important consideration. The limitation of the value or the, keeping the value from coming on the rolls at its full value, you would, part of the value would come off the rolls, but you're basically sheltering your tax base for M&amp;O purposes, and that's the part you're recaptured on. So that's where the values would not show up. So it would, it would, it wouldn't reduce, it would be a net reduction of your current recapture, but it would keep your recapture from going up by having the new value come onto the roads. I think it is important to note that for INS purposes, the full value would be on the rolls even during the limitation period so that if the district ever did decide to go out for a bond at any time, this property along with other taxpayers would help support that bond payment. So you get the benefit on the bond side, the value is sheltered on the M&amp;O side, and it would not, would not result in, in an increase in recapture. And in fact, as it's been laid out in the proposal, we, hopefully in the final agreement, you can negotiate some, some strong direct and indirect benefits to the district. One last point I want to make, and then we'll turn it back to you. How does a district's consideration of a 313 agreement impact other districts in Texas? I think that is an important question. You're obviously trustees with a fiduciary responsibility for Austin ISD. But we're all interested in and care about all students and how our system as a whole operates. Under our current school finance formulas, a district granting or not granting a 313 does not change either up or down the funding for any other school district in Texas. And I think that's important to note. Now, if the state, and that's a small two-letter word, but it's an important word, if the state reinvested value growth in our school funding formulas, that'd be a very different conversation. That's simply not the history that we've had in Texas, and that is not the way our current formulas work. But that will stop and respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you all very much for the presentations. Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Anderson?
Thank you all for that super high-level presentation. Ed Bluestein is in my neck of the woods, so I go by there often. Comment and a question, my, my question is, are there other districts that do these type of partnerships?
The answer is yes. And Chris, Mr. Kramer, do you want to mention some of them here in this area, for example?
So yeah, just here locally, Del Valley ISD did a similar Chapter 313 agreement with the Tesla Gigafactory out there. They've entered into one subsequently with Spansion, which is another fabrication facility. Samsung has a presence, Maynor ISD engaged in one quite a while ago with a 313. The new expansion in Taylor ISD, they have a Chapter 313 agreement there. There's another quite large facility that approached Hutto ISD and has just started the application process there back in April. And then Smithville, Elgin, Plotonia, a couple of small school districts have engaged with solid facilities as another type of qualified property that can engage in the Chapter 313.
And Lockhart just moved forward with an application last night. Do you know what that facility was?
Yes, sir. I was with Superintendent Estrada in that district last night, and they approved a battery energy storage project coupled with a photovoltaic solar project.
So trustee Anderson, there are a number of districts, and I think as was stated earlier, there are several hundred districts all over the state that over the 20 and a half-year period have authorized 313 agreements, but there are a number here in the central Texas area, a number of your neighbors.
And my comment, so as I stated, Ed Bluestein is my neck of the woods, and I can think, think of a handful of my campuses that are in driving distance from there, Barbara Jordan included. And, you know, like I said, I appreciate the high-level presentation, but I, I am a trustee who's in education. So for me, I would have liked to have heard how, you know, whether this happens or not, how you plan to partner to bring students who may be graduating, who are interested in semiconducting, or, you know, stuff like that, how you can create that pipeline for them a job. That, that's what I was looking for. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Anderson. Trustees, trustee Boswell?
Thank you all for being here. I appreciate the information and the presentation. My first question is to Kroll, whether your PowerPoint could be added to our board docs, if you could share that with the district? And Jacob, can we add that to board docs after the meeting? Okay. I would love to have that available for people who wanted to see it. Thank you. My next question is whether NXP is pursuing other incentives with the county or the city, or are they just looking to the district?
At this point, this is our first public discussion of the project, so.
Okay. I will take that as my answer. Thank you.
And a lot of that is due to the sunsetting of the program and the timeline that we're under specifically for the school district.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate the look at the community focus and would love to know how, I mean, I know that NXP is involved in a lot of these things and a lot of the, not only the district directly, but a lot of those groups that serve our students. I saw Breakthrough and Latininas and Out Youth, and a lot of the ones you mentioned are directly engaging with our students. Is there anticipation that those programs will grow if these facilities are expanded and built?
I think that's a fair statement. Yeah, I mean, as, as you grow employee base, generally, your budgets grow for these types of investments in the community.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a question for Mr. Thompson and Chris. I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name. I, I know that we are talking about whether we make an application, and I know the application does not require an agreement. Does it require us to enter into negotiations, or does it just give us the option to enter into negotiations? What, if we make an application, the comptroller approves it, what is our obligation at that point?
I think the assumption, if you move forward with an application, would be that there, you would at least explore what the benefits might be and whether we characterize those as discussions or negotiations. I, I would assume we would at least have a serious exploration with the company about that benefit. But you're not under any legal obligation to move the, and I have to say, the company is not under any legal obligation either. Neither party, once the application is submitted, is under an obligation to move forward to a final agreement. But without the application, you don't even have the opportunity to, to consider the option.
Okay, thank you. I know these are, you know, people have different views of 313 partnerships. And I would love the chance before, if this was going to come to a vote, make sure that we're really seeking community input. And I know this is not our usual timeline for having, you know, with our board previews. So I would, I really think community voices, you know, it'll be important to seek that between now and when we might vote on this. And then one more, two more questions. We talked about the potential benefits to students. And Mr. Thompson, you mentioned that. Are you talking there in terms of the internships, the?
I'm, I'm alluding to internships, externships, direct support on campuses for STEM or other technology-related programs and courses at some of your schools. Those, those types of direct benefits to the district, I believe, are things that would be open to be explored during and goes between an application and before the finalization of an agreement. But I'm going to defer to the company on what they're willing to explore in that regard. I don't want to speak on their behalf.
Sure. And I know that's a question for later, the details.
From the district's standpoint, I believe that would be very important for us to discuss with them.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that's what we were talking about, because I know that there's the financial benefit. I know that there's the financial benefit and then, you know, other possibilities. And then my understanding is the, you know, as presented, and Mr. Ramos, you may have something to say about this as well. I just want to be really clear on kind of the up and the down financially, looking at about eighteen and a half million in year one, you know, something a bit under six million for year two to ten. And then after that, the, the decrease of recapture goes away, and we're paying the full. But I know we talked, Mr. Ramos, I think this is kind of a drop in the bucket in terms of all the valuation of property in Austin, if we're talking about that recapture incentive going away later. And I want to really, I would love to have a better understanding of the risk if the project is built and we don't reach an agreement, kind of what that means for us.
And that's a relatively safe point, I think, at this point in time, because their plans at this particular juncture are contingent upon that CHIPS Act funding, and without that, we can't, without the local approval of 313, we can't access that CHIPS Act funding. That's, that's really an illustrative hypothetical, I think, to show what would happen negatively to the district if it were built here. But there's really no realistic possibility of that happening because of how important that is to the project.
Okay. Thank you. That's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, other trustees about that?
So did I hear you correctly that you already have two companies here in Austin?
Two locations.
Two locations.
Two physical manufacturing sites, same company, NXP.
Same company.
Yes, ma'am.
So why would you need another tax abatement?
Because the CHIPS Act, in order to get funding to develop the site by using the Bipartisan CHIPS Act at the federal level, that program requires local incentive, it's effectively a match for, for the benefits. And so without that federal grant money, the project either won't occur or very likely would occur in another country with lower operating and costs associated, as well as international incentives available to them.
Okay. President Rodriguez, I would like to request, we had a call in from Texas, Central Texas Interface opposing this, and I'd like to hear why, why, why they want us to, to hear more. And I'd like to see if we could invite them to share the community perspective on this particular issue.
Thank you for that comment, trustees, about that. I understand that, that Interface has already reached out to the school district and wants to set up some meetings with, with board members. So I think that'll be happening between now and the end of the vote.
Oh, okay.
So absolutely.
Thank you.
And then I think actually, was that the last question? Oh, yeah. And then I think the other one, trustee Boswell, just a quick question, just to clarify. I think you, you mentioned getting more community engagement, which I think we will by the time we potentially approve something. But I just wanted to get clarity that you wanted more engagement between now and the vote for, to apply. And if that's the case, what, what would that potentially look like, just so that folks know?
Yeah. My interest is just now that we've moved to a system where our information session has a preview of our voting meeting, and this was not on it, that if we move to put this on our agenda for the voting meeting, that we make some extra effort to make sure our community knows there's been a change that deviates from our norm, that as a board and with the district's help, that we make sure people know this is on the agendas of voting items, so it's not surprising people. And we're explaining why it's an exception to our rule and making sure that it doesn't feel like something that came in kind of undercover of night, which we know isn't.
Right.
And we know there's a deadline, but I think we need to be very clear about that with our community and also make sure, and we've got, you know, a week and a half ahead of us. But just make sure that people know that there has been this change and that there is an opportunity to speak up.
Yep.
And let us know. Thank you.
Trustee Singh, and then trustee Foster.
All right. Okay. So thank you all for being here and for this presentation. So I, I'm, you know, it's so tempting, right? Like anytime we hear that we can find ways to save money or have more money for our students, obviously, we're, we're all ears. And so I really look forward to hearing more about what the benefits would be to our students ultimately. But I do have to ask some questions. So, you know, so that I, you know, kind of feel fully engaged and fully informed before making, kind of making my personal decision on this. So you had mentioned in the presentation that there would be, you know, some, I know there's a requirement for job creation. Have you all determined a certain number of jobs that would be created that would be put in the application?
So the program requires a minimum of 25, but we would be well in excess of that with our current estimates of 750 to 800 jobs. And so, you know, our application would be somewhat conservative just to account for any fluctuation of potential, you know, increase or decreases. But again, the program at the state level has that 25 minimum. We'd be well above that in an application.
Okay. Like, do you have a sense of how, I mean, are we saying like 50, or were you saying like 500?
No, I would probably say 500.
Okay.
You know, in the application, we'd probably commit to, to the job creation at that level.
Okay. Thank you. And then can you share with us who else you might be negotiating with? My understanding of this is you might also be talking to like the city government or the Travis County as well?
Yes, we will be meeting with them next and kind of discussions. And again, that, the application timeline is different than the final investment decision and ultimate construction timeline. So unfortunately, the program deadlines are requiring a little bit more immediate action from the school side of this community engagement, but it will be forthcoming over the, you know, the next several months of engagement with county and city.
Okay. And do you have a sense of kind of what jobs or incentives you might be offering at the city and county level?
Unfortunately, without that initial meeting with the community, I don't want to, you know, make any projections on that at this time.
Got it. Got it. And then also, like, with this application, do you all commit to wages, like a certain set level of wages for these jobs?
So another requirement of the program is that they pay at least 110% of the county average wage, which we would exceed, and that would be our requirement of this contract, that we would exceed county average wage by 110%.
Okay. And, and would that be 110% of like the wage today? Or like, because it's a 10-year program. So like in year nine or 10, is it going to be 110% of the county wage at that time or for today?
Correct. And it's specific to the industry.
Okay. All right. And so that, that county average would increase over time then? Okay. I was just making sure about that. And is there an alternative location that you all are considering?
There's, yes, there's several.
Okay.
Without getting into too many specifics, because we are, you know, in NDAs with, with partners and so.
Got it. I understand.
But yes, it's a highly competitive.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is. So like, and then do you have, are you able to talk at all about like incentive offers from those other locations compared to Austin, or?
So trustee Singh, that they have programs that are specifically designed for the attraction of research and development and manufacturing of semiconductor chips. So we can point you to the fact that the European Union has those specific programs, which are fairly well outlined, and we'd be happy to provide more information about the generic outlines of the program. But we are bound by non-disclosure agreements for any specifics.
I understand.
But they do have fairly public programs that are designed to be able to, you know, put all that information, what, what the, what the spectrum of potential support is into the public domain and encourage companies to come contact them. So that's all fairly well documented in the EU.
Okay, great. And I also wanted to know, okay, so we, so it looks like President Rodriguez, we'd have to vote on this at the May meeting, correct? When did we first, when did the district first learn about this opportunity? I'm just wondering why it's been rushed.
I think we learned about it after the deadline of our board information meeting. And I'm trying to remember, Dr. Reed, the exact date. It was within the 72 hours before the board information session. And just remember, we also had, there was also a requirement that we sign, and I'm looking at our board council, but we excused her tonight. We had to, yeah, I'm sorry for this.
Non-disclosure agreement, right.
Yeah. But the NDA, we signed, and she reviewed it for us to do that. And so that's the reason, the timing. And then the timing is obviously the deadline is June 1 for the application.
Okay. So I don't want to sound synarky, but I'm just going to ask, like, why, like, why didn't you guys, like, why didn't we know about this like two months ago? Or three? Like, I'm just wondering, you know, I always get a little like, I wonder when things are rushed. Sometimes it's like, is that by accident? Is that?
It wasn't intentional. I can say that for, you know, certainty. This was not an intentional last-minute proposal to the school district.
Okay. And, and I really, I mean, I appreciate that. I don't want to sound like I don't want this, or like, I just am trying to go through all my little lists. So, because if I support it, I will be your number one fan. But, you know, but this is, y'all know, this is my process. Then I also wanted to, okay, so you had mentioned the CHIPS Act. Does that require funding? Like, so it sounds like you require a local match in order to qualify for that federal grant.
Correct.
Does that have to be local, like from the school district, or could it also be from the city or county?
It can be even from the state.
Okay.
In order to have access to state funds, there's also another requirement of local support as well. So, so really, the state and the federal government require local support in both instances. And so the 313 would qualify for both accounts.
Okay. Got it. And, and I think the last question I have is probably for Mr. Thompson, which is, so I know that one of the things, by the way, I like NXP. My husband actually used to work for y'all. But so we, what was I going to ask? Started thinking about my husband, lost my train of thought. But I guess my question is, like, how, like, would you guys have done this anyway? I mean, this is Austin. NXP is headquartered here. Like...
Yeah, well, they have major facilities outside of Austin as well. Arizona, for example, they have a massive fab. They have 30 facilities worldwide. And so, or they're in 30 countries worldwide, I should say, with, you know, 30,000 employees. So they're, they are big here in Austin. But if you look at them on a global scale, they're also extremely large elsewhere.
Got it. And then I think for me, like, the one thing that does actually interest me in this whole project, aside from the financial benefit to the district, of course, even more than that is like the potential opportunities for our students. Like, that to me would be like huge, right? And so with chapter, with these 313 agreements, can any of those be codified in the application, or is there any sort of legal contractor?
If, if the, if your administration makes a recommendation, and if the board decides to move forward with the application during the negotiation period, one thing that I should have mentioned earlier, there is a statutory limit on the aggregate value that the district can receive for granting a 313 application. And, and we would want to make sure that we did not run afoul of any of those, because ultimately, the agreement has to be submitted to the comptroller. The comptroller has to approve it before it goes into effect. So obviously, any provisions that would cause the comptroller to kick it back or not move forward with it, given the timeframe, would, would be problematic. But to the extent that we don't exceed the limitations that the district can negotiate a benefit for in the statute, we would aggressively pursue all of those benefits in terms of benefits to students. I'll say it that way. We don't want to push it past the limit, but we would like to get to the limit.
Is that the $100 per people?
The $100, yeah.
And then in addition to that, like, if, so like, we have, you know, we've got PTEC, we've got all sorts of programs in our schools.
Right.
For, you know, college and career readiness. And so like, is that something, like, would that just, could we have like a separate agreement saying, okay, NXP would have like?
Anything that I would say is your attorney, anything that can be quantified as part of a quid pro quo for granting the application and ultimately entering into the agreement, I suspect the comptroller would, would count against the $100 limit.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Now, now, obviously, separate from the agreement, I would, I would think there would be a lot of opportunities to have many ongoing conversations about benefits into the school, schools in addition to what is actually part of a quid pro quo in the agreement itself.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thank you all. I, again, I do really appreciate this coming to us. And I look, I just, thanks for answering my questions, and I look forward to learning more.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Singh. Trustee Foster, before I turn it over, you had just two real quick clarifications from the conversation with trustee Singh. One is, we're dealing with the Chapter 313 for a school district. When you're talking about the city and the county, you're talking Chapter 312, which has different timelines.
Correct, yeah.
As to why they're not.
And that is the key point. Chapter 312 was up for sunset review in 2019, and it was reauthorized. It didn't run afoul of the same issues that 313 ran afoul of in 2021. So, so there are timelines, there are opportunities to have conversations under 312 that aren't, simply aren't up against the same timelines that are in place for 313.
Yeah, just because of those deadlines, I'm sorry.
Should probably clarify that when the city of Austin and Travis County have had the opportunities to incentivize projects in the past, they've actually elected to use Chapter 380 and 381 of the, the local government code, which are very similar mechanisms for rebating property tax versus abating property tax. So it's essentially the same destination, just different ways to get there.
As opposed to abating it.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Yes, sir. More flexibility in, in their programs, and that's how they've structured them historically.
Yeah.
But conceptually, the same.
Thank you. And then the second clarification question is just because I know that in Travis County, in the city, and obviously us, there is a community workforce development plan to connect our local community to high-demand careers, whether it's manufacturing, healthcare, or, oh, I know this, manufacturing, healthcare, and one other huge one. And I, but, yeah, IT, technology. And you talked about wages. And one of the things I know that I thought trustee Singh was going to head towards, during construction, you all are also required to be obligated to paying prevailing wages under the Davis-Bacon Act, which we should also note that in the city of Austin, those prevailing wages in a number of categories are much higher than those. So you'll be paying higher wages for, for the construction jobs as well. Because I think that's another benefit to this, that, that you all were talking about.
And President Rodriguez, I've had some very recent experience with EDA grants that require Davis-Bacon wage rates to be paid. And given the hyperactivity of the construction schedule and bandwidth here in Texas, we had no problem whatsoever meeting those. They were, they were far in excess of the wage rates, what real conditions were on the ground at the time. So we anticipate that that's going to also be the case with any 313 projects in Texas. They would, they would be paying above that because those numbers lag on Davis-Bacon charts.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Foster?
So good evening and welcome. Just to begin, I can pretend this was all for the public's benefit, but for my benefit, can you please sort of clarify your roles here tonight? Attorney for and a representative of Kroll, or a consultant that specializes in this on behalf of all sorts of folks seeking to, yeah, so just, who are you guys?
Sure. Kroll is a global valuation, cybersecurity threat, physical threat security. We do a lot of work for school districts outside of the services that Tony and I operate in. We operate in our state and local tax practice, focusing on site selection and incentive relocation services on behalf of our clients globally. And so NXP is a client of ours that we represent and are representing on this specific project.
Thank you. And of course, I'll ask the same of you all.
And I'm David Thompson with Thompson and Horton Law Firm, and we are the district count. And I'm David Thompson with Thompson and Horton Law Firm, and we are the district council on this specific project. Our law firm specifically specializes in advising school districts, community colleges, and four-year colleges, higher education in Texas and actually all across the country. But we're strictly on the school district side of these discussions, never on the industry side of these discussions.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
And Chris Grammer.
Chris Grammer with Colwell Consulting. We're a consultancy that works with exclusively for public school districts in the state of Texas. In terms of Chapter 313 agreement, has been working with school districts for a better part of the last 12 years. And our role in this is to give you all the information in terms of the financial impact of this type of project coming, the value limitation being in place, and what financial benefits there are for the school district within the program.
Thank you. So first of all, just, just as I'm trying to level set my understanding here, if 313 doesn't exist, is NXP then ineligible for CHIPS benefits anywhere in Texas? Is that the way this works?
No, we would just need to look at other programs with other jurisdictions. If there were no specific program for school districts that would provide any type of economic incentive, then we would need to, you know, continue focusing on other jurisdictions, including city, county, community colleges, or other ancillary direct beneficiaries.
So do you need the agreement of, I mean, gosh, how many municipalities are overlapping? Do you need something from each local municipality, the community college, the school district, the county, or do you just need one? So like, if we don't jump on this, the county jumps on us, we're out of luck? Like, how does that work in terms of all these different local municipalities that are overlapping?
Yeah, so it's a match. So the more support we have locally.
It's a match.
The more support we'll have at the state, and the more support we'll have at the federal level. So it's, you know.
So some entities could choose to participate in.
Correct.
Some could not, and you could conceivably move forward. And you had said, it's unlikely that if the school district doesn't participate, that NXP would go forward with this particular site. But is that actually the case, given what you're saying about you could just work with other local municipalities?
Well.
And if I'm using language imprecisely, please correct me.
Sure, sure. And again, you know, the impacts at the school level are much greater than at the city level due to the tax rates. Obviously, the school district, the burden of taxes at much greater rate.
Got it.
Comparatively than all the additional jurisdictions combined. So I think that's where we see a major impact in providing those grants. And I think locally, at the school district level, it's such a big differentiator that it would yield a significant impact for the decision-making process.
Got it. So what I could do is look at my property tax bill and get a sense of why the school district is important in this conversation.
Right, exactly. They don't have a homestead cap.
That's, that's really, that's really helpful. So how are the direct benefits set and are they negotiable?
So the direct benefits are set as a, more of a formulaic process with, you know, the school financing. That's, that's where Chris comes in. He's a, you know, and it is capped at the 40% benefit, so that's the most that the school district can receive. And my understanding is those funds can be used outside of the regular annual budget for, you know, specifically, as long as it's legal, those funds can be used for any purpose, for school activities, investments, student engagement, student opportunities.
And I would note, it was on one of the slides, if you, if you look at that 40% payment, but then also don't forget the, the income, the, basically the formula hold harmless payment. Those two, and not every district has that same large formula hold harmless number, it wouldn't be, that's going to vary from district to district as the impact of the formulas vary. If you put those two numbers together, you're really more in the 45% range.
Correct.
And so.
So in a sense, it's, again, tell me if I'm wrong, but in a city or in a school district subject to huge recapture, this has a greater positive impact than a school district not subject to large recapture, or not subject to recapture at all?
I would, I would say yes, in terms of the impact that being able to negate the, the full value of the project coming on, increasing the recapture payment, I would say also in terms of speaking of money flowing to the school district, so recapture is a conversation of what's going out. And that we don't have any control over, with the 313, there's some control over the value that we're adding. And it is pointed out that the tax base of Austin ISD, this project coming in, is a small percentage. Now, there aren't very many school districts that engage in this process where two-plus-billion dollars comes and it's a small amount. But within the 313 program that we've kind of talked about a little bit in terms of the supplemental payments or the revenue protection, the amount of money that the program allows to flow from the company to the school district, either compensating for the loss of MNO revenue or as a supplemental payment in terms of the tax savings, the benefit for Austin ISD is that the multiplier is based on average daily attendance. And so the average daily attendance, as high as it is, multiplied by 100 times the eligible number of years, that cap we've discussed being around $100 million, the payment or whatever percentage might be negotiated in terms of the sharing of the tax savings from the company back to the school district, allows those dollars to be high. If we were to compare to some of those neighboring school districts we've talked about, Del Valley, Taylor, Hutto, that have engaged, you know, multi-billion dollar facilities, well, they're limited because they could only negotiate up to a $100 per their average daily attendance.
So they don't get as much benefit.
Those are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars annually, as opposed to the millions of dollars that we're talking about here in this case. So that's, that's, that's another big driver of why this project landing here in a school district with a lot of students is a big difference, because there's a lot of space to take advantage of that on the local level.
Can you say more about the, this, the $100 per student? Just say more, so I can understand.
Sure. So again, as David referenced in the tax code, there are stipulations, and you kind of referenced this at the very beginning, of what is set for us and what is negotiable. What's set for you by the comptroller's office is that this project would come be taxed, taxed at a limited value of $100 million. That's dictated to us by their office. The types of, the types of projects that qualify is dictated by the statute. The types of benefits that are here for the school district are set. Now, that $100 per ADA, that's to provide a kind of bumpers that, you know, we can negotiate anything from zero, if you want to, to up to that amount. Now, we can go anywhere between that, and that's what we've talked about. We've got the next six months, if you choose to move forward, to then slow down the process, engage that, and really, you know, bring all the pieces together to put together a package that you say, yes, this is in the best interest of our school district.
So what counts towards the hundred, like, any kind of in kind? So I would love to see an engineer in residence at three of our high schools. Is there a dollar amount attached, or is that an in kind that is off book?
I think what we will do, if we get to that point into the negotiations, we will look carefully at anything that is quantifiable and that is part of the quid pro quo for the approval. And we will probably have conversations with the comptroller's office to make sure that we don't hit a tripwire that would cause an agreement to be rejected or kicked back.
So really, everything that is, if it's part of the quid pro quo.
Once, once you, once you get past just the sheer dollars, here's the payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
And you start talking about other benefits, we want to structure those in a way so that the comptroller's office views it as being in compliance and not, not causing a problem with an application or an agreement being finally approved.
All right, so with advanced apology for kind of getting in the weeds here, but for me, what is a benefit to our students? That's all, I mean, that's it, right? So I saw like a whole bunch of OS prep and Latinitas and all these, all cool stuff, all cool stuff, all cool programs. And I love programs in our schools, and I love partner, I love folks that partner. And I love even more when our efforts are thoughtful and coordinated, and we don't scattershot our schools with programs, but rather we have a thoughtfulness, and I put this on the administration as well, there's a thoughtfulness about what programs come into our schools and to what intended positive outcome. If you start to build out an infrastructure for that, a board, an agreement that says, all right, these folks from AISD are going to meet from these folks with NXP, and we're going to come up with stuff that could be valued. I would hope not. I hope maybe this is just our volunteer hours or something like that. But I would love to see, there's so many things I'd love to see. And as I said in some earlier conversation, I've taken kids to Freescale on really, really cool field trips, and I feel like that must have been, I think it was decades ago at this point. But it was, it was really memorable, and it was memorable for my kids. And so I, I, I feel tangibly that the potential benefits. And the benefits best accrue when we're thoughtful. So what I'd be interested in, I may not say this to the administration, to my fellow trustees, I'd say that to anyone who cares to listen, is that we really look for creative opportunities that feel good, but much more important than feel good, we can look to intended student outcomes. And I don't know, and I, maybe I would put that to y'all, do you all have examples of the thoughtful engagement of school districts to see not only that we do fun things that are splashy, but that we do things that have intended outcomes and those outcomes are realized?
Yeah, I mean, Trustee Foster, I think the, there would be no arm twisting required to get the company really excited and engaged with K-312 and AISD, because they depend, their, their business model depends on really smart people coming into the pipeline and working for them. And so they want to sponsor STEM curriculum development, they want to sponsor internships and externships. As their tax consultants, we get to go into the fabs sometimes and, you know, suit up and see the cool stuff ourselves. So we geek out about it too and get excited about what, what the whole, the whole manufacturing process looks like. But those, those people are, you know, they're only as good as their school districts that support them and put the kids into the University of Texas and A&amp;M and ACC here locally. And so they want to develop those, those pipelines all the way down to the youngest possible level of interest and age-appropriate curriculum. And so I think they'd be extremely excited to develop some programs that would make sense for the district, you know, from a, from a programmatic standpoint, like you said, being efficient with their, with their time, and, you know, get kids engaged as early as possible and coming to work for them. And that's hugely beneficial for everybody, to show kids a career path and a career advancement track that they could get interested in early on.
And NXP's been here a long time. They, they don't come here often asking ever really for support from the school in this regards, and they have a proud history of supporting the community with or without. So I think that bodes well for who NXP is as an organization, as a company, and they've shown and proven to the community that they are a part of, that they will continue to support.
Okay. I'm sure many more questions will unfold over time, but I appreciate y'all's presentation and the time this evening.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Foster. Trustees, other questions? If not, thank you all very much, presentations.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'll head back and get my son ready for star testing tomorrow.
Yes. I forgot to say, thank you for choosing Austin ISD.
You're welcome.
Trustees, we are now going to recess the open meeting at, oh, at 9:50 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. For our viewers at home, this concludes our live broadcast. When we're finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us and have a good evening. So we will now reconvene the open meeting at 10:46 PM. Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Zapata to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes by all those on the dais. The meeting is now adjourned at 10:46 PM. Thank you.